Call the meeting to order.
Yes.
Ms., please give us the pledge of allegiance.
Right hand on your chest. My pledge of allegiance is to the eye of the United States of America and to the free public that for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, and then number one to the roll up the minutes, please. Take the roll call, Madam Chair. I skipped that. Roll call, please. Karen's away. Committee member Warehane.
Here.
Committee member Sandifer.
Here.
Committee member Dyke.
Here.
Committee member Capelli.
Here.
Vice Chair Schall.
Here.
Chair Olsted-Bowen.
Here.
So we want to look at the minutes we can do as well. Terrence out. We have several changes to the minutes. And anyway, if I'm going to read the ones I have, then anyone can add it. On the first meeting, the first bolded section, Schall has spelled incorrectly. It has a C in it. That C has to come out. And the second bolded section, Schall has a C in it. It has to come out. And the third bolded, no, yeah, the third bolded section, that act motion was actually withdrawn. There was never a vote on that motion on page four. On page four, yes. And that motion was made by, I think, didn't you make the motion and then Chair seconded it on the second, recommending the city council fund when dedicated to it. Okay, so that was Sandifer made the first and then Dyke seconded it. And then on the next motion, you have Warehane, is it Dyke? Is that how you pronounce it?
Dyke.
And you have Olsted-Bowen saying, "A," "Yay," and I said, "No." And I think that's all I have. Does anyone else have anything?
So back to page four. Warehane and Dyke recommended. So if you cover this a little bit.
Yeah, we have Dyke and Sandifer now. Of the two, yes. Are there any other changes or amendments?
Yeah.
Do you want to give her this? The ones that were placed on the dice to bear the same thing they received be an email. If you can use those and have any changes, it will be the same. Can we just say that it was Sandifer slash Dyke? Because he made the first and we made the second. We made the motion, we made the second.
I think actually I said.
I seconded. What I asked for was the friendly amendment to split it so that we could.
Okay, so you, so it was you saying it was.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry. So we have Sandifer. Turn it in. Yes. Sorry. Oh, yeah, and then it says, "Thank you." On page seven, at the very bottom, hold, it says, "Meeting on Monday, June 4th." That's 10. Okay, I'll read out the changes that I made if there's one.
I have one.
Under public comment, that's why. I'm not sure if the public's allowed to interject on. If not, that's fine, but. I can take them by email. Okay, that's fine, and we can do that. Okay. So the changes that we do have for to, for the amendments for May 29th, revised amendments, is the Vice Chair Schall will be corrected in the two bolded areas where it shows her name being spelled with a C. Those will be corrected. On page four, there will be, the vote will be removed from the first bolded motion at the bottom of the page. That was the motion was withdrawn before the vote. And then the second motion that is here, it is actually Sandifer made the motion and Capelli made the second. And then there is a no vote to be shown for Chair Olsted-Bowen. And then on page seven, I will be changing the vote or the recommending the measure R meeting to be Monday, June 10th, not June 4th. And that's all that I show at this time.
I don't think I made the motion. I think the motion on the recommendation to fund the traffic deputy.
Which one? I'm sorry.
It's at the bottom of page four.
At the bottom of page four. Correct. We changed it.
We changed it.
Yes. It's just, that was the one that's been corrected. Okay, any other discussion? Can I have a motion?
A motion, so please submit it.
Has a letter. Senator. Um, day for, oh, roll call, right? Correct. Committee member Dyke.
Here.
That was a vote of yes.
Yes.
Committee member Warehane.
Yes.
Committee member Sandifer.
Yes.
Member, committee member Dyke.
Yes.
Committee member Capelli.
Aye.
Vice Chair Schall.
Yes.
Chair Olsted-Bowen.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimous. Okay, our discussion item, last week we got, I mean, last meeting, we got a little out of control and it was a little scattered and people, even watching the video, it was hard to decide who was saying what when. So we're going to use parliamentary rule of order. We'll have our staff report presentations. Then each committee person will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions in order. So no talking over, no, you know, so write down, as we're doing this staff report, write down the questions.
Madam Chair?
So that we're prepared. Yes?
Shouldn't we do Robert's Rule of Order in the meeting?
That's, yeah, the parliamentary is the Robert's Rule of Order.
Oh, I forgot that. Just learned something. Thank you.
And I learn something every day, too.
So how about, again, we're going to do what? Which one?
So we're going to have the staff report, well, it's the same thing, Robert Rule of Order slash parliamentary. So we're going to have our staff report. Then each person will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Then we will have call for public comments so that if there's any cards, people can come up. And then we will have the final discussion and ask for a motion and then, we'll ask for a motion and then we'll come back if everybody can comment again and then we'll vote. Okay, so we're.
Madam Chair, let me just ask, add to your, what you just said, and that is, there has been some misconception about whether you have enough time to do your walk or not. I want to make it clear today if I haven't, if I wasn't, if I was mistaken somehow during the last meeting, that you do have as much time as you need to review the staff presentation, to ask questions, to have information brought back to you, and to deliberate amongst yourself before you make a decision on any item before you. Although I had previously said that ideally we would have liked to have this process, come up with a recommendation before the city council adopts its budget. Given some of the challenges that we have had, certainly, I don't think, I now don't believe that that is something that is achievable. So whenever the committee is done with its work with respect to Measure R, I will bring the entire package of your recommendation to the city council. So again, I want to remind you to take as much time as you, as you need to review the materials before you, to ask as many questions as you would like to ask, and to ask for information to be brought back to you where you don't think you have adequate information to make a recommendation to the city council. And when you're done with all of these and have formulated a budget recommendation to the city council on Measure R as a whole, we will bring it forward as a recommendation from, from the committee to the city council, and the city council will act on it on a later date, which could be after July 1st.
Okay, so let's move on to the funding request. Street projects. And I know you've already given them to us, but let's skip them.
Actually, I do want to go back as far as for trails, so I know we talked about before, another commission already talked about approving the.
The trails is not on our agenda.
The, but I want to let you know I have the form to show that what, what trails were ultimately selected by the stud committee. So I have it in the story I gave to you today, so you're used to where what the stud committee chose for trail improvements related to the trail management. So I want to make sure I got back to you on that. Okay, so going back to street projects, again, we have about 247 public streets or about 100 miles of public maintained roads, 68 private streets that are not maintained by the city. Current sources of street funding include Measure A, SB 1, the development impact we get from any development projects, and now Measure R. I shall also add, it's not included there. We also get tump money, which is available from WRCO. But it's what specific projects that are designated. I have one project right now that has that funding, which is the Hamner widening, widening certain parcels that have not been developed along Hamner 3rd and 5th. So there's small projects that have funding, and that's one of the examples. So how do we determine what streets should be repaved against general street condition, the type of treatment required, whether we should do a grind and overlay now or wait a few years to end up doing a full reconstruct or a slurry seal to avoid a grind and overlay in a couple of years? There's different ways we do that. Funding that's available will help us decide what we're going to do. There are other capital projects that we might be working on in a short time, whether it be water, sewer, a storm drain project, maybe we want to hold off a year or two, we can do them all at once. You know, there's things like that we want to look at as far as overall what our plan is, so we're having a comprehensive look at it. We also have our PMS, pavement management study software that we implemented in 2014. Basically, our city engineer and his staff from RKA went out, developed the program, the existing program, they developed, they did great rating for all our streets. They went out, basically visually looked at all the streets, determined their overall condition, gave them a score based off of the pavement condition index, and rated them either 100 to 70, which is very good, 69 to 50, which is good, 49 to 25, which is poor, and 24 to 0, which is very poor. So we have a database that tells us the current condition, and that database automatically updates itself on a year-to-year basis by systematically reducing their score over time, assuming a certain amount of wear and tear. So it keeps up with this over time, kind of an idea of what the average current health of our roads are over time. So the current street projects that we're going to finish or about to finish before June, these are the projects we have. We have Cedar Ridge, Mountain first to second, Mountain second to the north end, basically to College, Sutton, Crestview, 6th to 7th, that's been done with a storm drain project that flood control is doing, Pedley between 6th and 7th, that was just recently finished, Western, that's from 2nd to Park Ridge, Corona from 6th to 5th, Lasso, and Shawnee, which was the bottom one, those were done with a water line project, those have been finished. Pacific is actually already been done, Paddock's been done, Hidden Valley is recently almost finished. They paved it, it still needs to get some striping and, but it's almost done. But that's the current projects we were working on finishing as of now, so you're aware of kind of what we're working on or finishing. And then, both street projects from all our funding sources, we have Crestview, and that's continuing that work that's going on from there from 7th to north. We want to finish the rest of that road because it's really in bad condition. Well, Paul, so you notice the scores for each of those projects, they're pretty much, it's pretty bad a street right there. We have Sierra from Detroit to 6th, it's in real poor condition. We're also going to widen that road at the north end. It's got curb and gutter almost all the way through except the last couple homes on the east side and one on the west side, so we want to finish that off, widen it, put the curb and gutter in, and redo the roadway. It's already got brand new trail fencing on that street. We're going to do various slurry projects. We haven't determined the location we're going to do that, so we base off the current condition of the roads, but we're going to do similar to what we did up in the hills recently, in the LMDs. It's to preserve the current condition so that it doesn't go down to what we're going to grind overlay. We have a couple areas we're looking at, we have decided, basically, we're allocating $150,000 for barrier slurry sale. We're going to keep that up every year as part of our budget, so we keep doing slurry sales and preserving our streets in that way. We have Vine Street, which was supposed to be part of a water project, but we ultimately had pulled it out because the cost turned out to be a project that required more work than originally engineer thought needed. Their quote to do that additional work was pretty substantial, so we decided to just pull it from the water project and come back with a brand new project that has recently just been designed, and we're going to get ready to go back out with that and complete that work. And that's between Bluff and Corinon as far as locations. Then we're doing Driftwood and Hatton, which are also cul-de-sacs off of that street, and we'll get that area done. We have Del Mar between Kids Corner and Corinon Avenue. Again, that's a project that is well needed, we're doing a lot of pothole repair in that area. We have 2nd and 6th Street, those are basically, both those projects are, we're trying to widen the roadway on 2nd and 6th to a dedicated right turn lane onto the southbound I-15 to help alleviate traffic congestion, both at 6th Street off of Hamner and 2nd Street off of Hamner. And so we're, hopefully, that we can get that completed. We're trying to get through Caltrans, though again, it shows you the funding source for all those projects are, I forgot to mention those. Then we have Hamner between 3rd and 5th, that's the tump money I talked about before. It's 100% tump, it's going to actually start in July, it's already been awarded, and they're going to basically go through and do about nine different parcels and widen them out to the existing street width you see in most of that section of Hamner. Then we have Hamner from 3rd to Hidden Valley Parkway. This is, our goal here is, again, is to try to finish Hamner. We have gone from 6th all the way to 3rd now. We want to go from 3rd all the way to Hidden Valley. That has actually involved various different treatments in different sections because the overall condition, parts of the road are okay and may just need a little tiny tenth grind. Some areas need to reconstruct, mainly between 2nd and 1st Street, and also 1st Street and Valley that are pretty poor. So we're going to have various treatments in that area, but it's, our goal is to get that finished, that whole section of Hamner within our city limits, all be done. And then we have Pedley between River, River Road and 7th Street. Sorry, there shouldn't have been River, no, it's River Road. It really should be Santa Ana River to 7th Street. It's part of a storm drain project that we have already awarded, and as they're doing the storm drain project, we want to just go ahead and redo the surface of the road since we're going to be done in that area, don't have any water sewer projects in that area. So we're choosing to get that one done. That has already been awarded, they should be starting sometime in the end of June, early July. And then the two specific projects we identified for Measure R are Valley View 3rd and 4th. It's combining it with a storm drain project that are currently under design. We're doing a storm drain that's going to be halfway between 4th Street and going towards 3rd. That's basically the low point, grabbing that water and taking it towards 3rd. So then we really want to, we want to redo the road after that because it's in really poor condition. And then the other one is River Road Bluff, Bluff Street to, basically, it's between Sundance and Bluff is the easiest way to describe it. Again, half that street's pretty poor, replaced a lot of potholes, it's got a lot of degradation. The other half's okay, so it'll probably be a half and half type of treatment where we have a grind and overlay, and in the past can be a complete reconstruct. But we're spending a lot of time out there doing pothole repairs. We've had several claims in that area. And again, it's scores wise, they're all already pretty low, pretty poor, so that's why we focused on those areas. Plus, River Road is a highly trafficked area, high speeds, we really need to make sure those roads are as safe as can be because of the amount of usage they get. That's it, we have to answer your questions you may have. No questions?
No. Any questions?
No question.
Based on your pavement management system, is it being 69% of the roads are very good? You know what the percentages are?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a map, a pavement map, that shows which ones are very good, which ones are?
Yes, we have, we have all that updated in our GIS system, which is available to staff. It's not publicly published at this point, but it's something we have as a map, yes.
Because if 69% of them are very good, then close to 31% are, check the bad, bad roads?
I mean, you have 9% that are good. I mean, you know, I'd say that good and very good is, you've got pretty good road.
Okay.
You know, below that is where you really, like, noticeably see the conditions change. You get a lot of cracking, a lot of little spalling in certain areas. I think that's where you really get your visual delineation from.
And those are the ones that really need work.
Yeah, I'd say definitely the ones that are poor and to very poor.
Can we get a copy of the map that shows the map of what's bad?
Yep. I'll have to make it big, otherwise it's going to be hard to see all the colors and stuff. So it'll be a big one that I can provide to all of you. Unless you want digital, I can give you a digital copy.
Digital, thank you.
Okay, I can send an email.
Great. Did everyone say no? Okay, um, yes, no, I know. I'm sorry. I looked that way and that was, it's okay, it's fine. You started out by saying you had some additional trail information or trail statistics. What was that?
Yeah, I was indicating that previously, we were talking about trail discussion, that we had not selected the specific trails that we're going to get and fence it.
Okay.
But I was going to meet with the stud committee that followed. We didn't meet prior to Monday. I now have that list of all the trails. We did, basically did a primary list of eight or nine locations and then a secondary list. Sometimes we like to switch them around based off actual conditions that we have there. So we have about 15 different that we wanted, the stud committee wanted to focus on, and I can provide a copy of that to you.
That'd be great. Do you have it in or not, or?
Yeah, I have the list with it now.
That'd be great. And then, so we're only asking questions about streets, and he just happened to mention that, so we're asking that. But if I had other questions about fencing or something, you want to wait until the end? Till a comment period? Actually, it's not on our agenda, so we would have to put it in next month's agenda. Okay. Is there a new items or a new business section or the opportunity to do comments at the end when we can ask for information?
Yes.
If there's some kind of comment at the end? Yes. So that I can ask for additional information and for that, so thank you.
Okay, at a previous meeting, you had been asked about the list of dollar amounts for the, there's two Measure R programs, Valley View and River Road. At that time, you said they were ballpark numbers, no estimates from contractors have been gathered. Have any estimates from contractors been gathered since?
No, because it's not an official project, so we haven't even designed it yet. We wouldn't get those until after we designed it, put it out to bid. We haven't even started the process yet because they're not approved projects.
Okay, so the numbers listed here are by experience?
Yeah, from the city engineer.
Okay. And then the Hidden Valley section from Hammer Avenue to the I-15 Bridge, you said is almost completed, looks very nice. That, the PCI that's listed is 55. So why was that chosen and what did it cost?
I don't know the dollar amount, but it was chosen because we had severe spalling in the, in the eastbound lane between the I-15 and the, and the, basically that little shopping center that's right there. Plus, we had some damage right at the bridge deck, and we're responsible for, per the agreement with the state of California, to actually manage and pave everything that's in Caltrans right away. So since I was already doing half of that section, I decided to just finish it off and do the remainder half. So the score wasn't really reflective of the actual conditions. In my opinion, it was really in a, very poor condition. It was probably, in my opinion, looking at, it's probably about a 30, if not less.
We had to look at the whole.
Yeah, we had to look at the whole thing and didn't, didn't make sense paving a small section and not doing the rest. We just got it all done at once. And I want to say, I think it was, I have my shirt on, I think it was under $200,000, but I can't recall it.
So when the road selection is made, are the possible water lines underneath the road considered?
Oh, all infrastructure is considered regarding any roadway improvement that we're planning on doing. We try to, again, we want to look at all those issues. Is there going to be a storm drain? Is there going to be a sewer? Is there going to be water needed in the next five to 10 years? And we try to look at that and make sure that we're not doing one before the other. And it's always consideration on all our projects.
Okay, thank you. That's all. No question?
Okay, my first question is, has the street trails committee reviewed these projects and recommended them?
No, we don't, and we take these projects to the street trails utility commission.
Okay. If the funding is not used, so say, say for example, you tell us it's going to cost $800,000, it costs $600,000, so now we have a gap of $200,000. Does that $200,000, is it returned to the Measure R fund?
My understanding, it would be yes.
Okay. And if it comes, it goes over, are you going to come back to us and say, "We need additional funding?" And I know that happens sometimes, you know, especially with pricing and you find, or unexpected things happen. So if that happens, so say it comes up to $900,000, are you going to come back to this committee and ask for $900,000?
That would depend on what we understood as a budget, whether or not there was additional funds that weren't allocated and are available to be allocated for overages. Otherwise, I would seek other funding in my other street funding projects to help cover that gap.
Right, so $800,000 would be the maximum you're going to take out of Measure R?
Yes, on a.
On that?
As approved by, by this commission and the council.
Let me, let me add to that a little bit. So what we're here tonight is to look at the budget based on estimates, staff, city engineers estimate. There is another step, step in the process that involves awarding a contract. So the specifications are going to be completed and we'll go out there and then we'll get bids back to award a contract. And that's when we will first know whether this amount is over or under. Yes, I, when those bids come back, it would be my goal to bring that bid first to the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee to, if, if the bids exceed the amount that we have estimated here, and then determine what to do. There might be some other projects that might come under, and then funds will be reallocated from those projects to the project that is over. But that is part of what I believe will be your oversight in the process.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to...
To approve those two projects?
Yes.
Is that it?
Is that public? Any public comments first?
I'm sorry, yes, skip that. I'm trying to be organized, okay?
I don't even get a...
Any parts on that? You have no parts for this item, no public comments, but thank you. Keeping, keeping in check. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. And more votes? Any comments from the committee? Any additional questions or comments?
Madame Chair has a question. A motion in regards to what Chad mentioned about the five-year plan of any other projects. You had mentioned last meeting that River Road may have a construction project, some housing deal over there. You didn't know when that would be, so you're thinking that would be over five years?
Probably at least five, in my opinion. If it was actually to fruition, probably four to five years before it actually broke ground.
And that would affect this project and re-cut up the street after they came in?
They, they would have half-street requirements, but again, because it's not a project that's even in the queue, we really don't consider it as a project. If it was something that was maybe a year out of maybe going to plan and commission, getting reviewed, we would probably try to stretch that and say, let's not do this because they're going to take care of half that road. Let's save money, but we're, it's not even a project at this point.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question regarding any of these funds. So have Measure R funds been calculated and received for the two months of programs being in existence? April 1st?
So as we discussed at our very first meeting, Measure R, the one cent sales tax increase went into effect April 1, 2019. And that's when the retailers started collecting this additional tax. Those taxes collected will be sent to the State Department of Tax and Fee Administration, who administers the tax. And the first advanced payment that the city should receive will come about two months after it was implemented. So I suspect our first payment on this Measure R will come next month, which is the month of, of...
Do you have any idea whether they're going to need the projected annual revenues?
So what we've done, again, I think we discussed this at our very first meeting, is do the estimate based on best information we have available. We did the estimates internally. We also have, we had our sales tax consultant who sort of got us information regarding sales tax in the city, who reviews those audits then. They did the same estimate and the numbers that came up are essentially the same numbers that we came up with. So at this point, based on the information we have available, we believe the 4.5 million we project for next fiscal year and approximately 1.1 million we project for this, for this fiscal year is still our best numbers. We don't have any reasons to adjust those at this point.
And we'll vote. The committee member hates?
Aye.
Committee member working?
Aye.
Committee member center?
Aye.
Committee member guide?
Aye.
Committee member tally?
Aye.
Vice chair Scholz?
Aye.
Chair, please step forward.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous. Okay, now we'll go to the facility maintenance and projects. And I don't know if we can do this, but Brian, this is really a lot of stuff.
I think I can cut through some if you want.
I was going to say, can we go by sections, like do roofs first and then do the next one and then, you know, just to make it easier to understand and true or system, you know?
Whatever. Okay, absolutely. All right, so this, this particular first project is our citywide roofing project. Basically, what we talked about in our last meeting was is there are a number of roofs, all of them have leaks in them. Some of them are pretty serious situations where we actually have tear-off and we're going to have to do replacement. We did it, we actually brought it, we did a full evaluation of all the roofs and estimated cost of what each of those roofs would take to replace. And then all of, anything we do in a roof right now must meet Title 24 and be energy efficient. So that is a requirement by the state. So all of these roof projects would meet that qualification. So the bottom line is 805,500 to do all of those roofs. The problem with the roof projects is, is that we've done patch and fix for so long that at some point you can't keep doing that until you actually have to either do a tear-off or replacement. And we've really kicked the can down the road to the point where I need to do some of this work right away. Otherwise, I'm still doing patches, I still have leaks, then I, then I run into situations with mold and other problems of a healthy building. So, anyway, this is the roof projects as a whole. So I'll answer any questions that the committee may have.
Does anyone have any questions on roofs?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So there's 10 different projects here. So what sort of timeline do you have for completion? We'll be sure of it. One of my goals would be to take them all out at one time, one for best price. The more square footage I add to the project, the better the pricing is. And again, this is my estimate, every come in too. We utilize Garland Roofing, which is one of the top three companies in the country for material. We can actually purchase that through the CMAS schedule and then we bid out the contract per proportion. That is bid out at prevailing wages. And so these are the estimates I give from our consultant, but we would take these projects out. I would see we would probably start somewhere in, there's a, with roofing projects, it's a challenge because the schools are doing most of the, contractors are really engaged in the summertime because schools are out. So if you try to bid a project during that time, your costs are going to be really elevated. So we hit it during the fall, right after they're done with that section, and we usually don't get best pricing from my estimate. And then we would finish these projects up February, right before we really hit our rainy season. What is a typical warranty period on a roof? It depends on the type of roof, but some roofs will range from 20 to 10, from 10 years to 20 years type of roof. And then you're looking at some sort of a maintenance program at the end of that 10 years to extend that asset. As opposed to where I am in some situations now where I may, for example, let's just use one really quick, and I'll do a flat roof. Let's say Riley Gymnasium, which is pretty much a flat roof. That type of design there just will not work anymore. And this actually has a full coating over it. So at the end of 10 years, we'll come back with a maintenance program. So instead of spending what we would be spending 137,500, we'll be spending something, but it won't be anything near that. City Hall's a flat roof, same situation here. We redid this roof several years ago, but the next time around, as long as we take care of the roof, we can keep this, as opposed to letting it go to where we're looking at tear-out sections and things like that. That warranty is written into the contract? Yes, and all of them are required. And actually, it's not only that, it's a manufacturer warranty. And so what Garland does is they come out and inspect handling, so we, and during rainy seasons. So we maintain that warranty. We've had great success with them. The contractor, their typical warranties are typically about a year on workmanship, but they all have to be qualified under Garland. But the Garland roof, any defects or any problems, it's all on them, contracted cost and everything. And I'll give you an example. Here at City Hall, when we did this several years ago, we had a little problem with bubbling. Brought it up, inspected, should not have, that it did, complete correction, have never had that happen again. So no, no cost to the city at all. So they've been very, very responsive.
Can you explain a little bit more about the Garland product? I heard you say that you're getting it from the CMAS schedule, so, which means it's been kind of competitively bid at some point in time on a massive national spectrum. But can you explain a little bit more about?
So what we do is we go through our CMAS, which is through the state of California, and for best price. And basically, that's material only. The actual implementation is then by contract. So we purchase, we spec out all of the material that is required under that product, and then that provides us also the warranty. And then the contractors then bid on all, on all those projects. And they must be certified Garland to do that. And they are approved sourced by City Hall.
How long have we been using Garland?
I've been involved with Garland now for probably about seven years.
And you said that all of these buildings are currently either, they're currently leaking, they have lived, they're, all of them are actually at a critical stage?
Oh, yeah. In fact, actually, Station 47, we have a leak in the U.C. We cannot find where it's coming from. Station 57 in the housing section for the firemen, it actually leaks in their bedrooms. So we have, that, Station 57 is critical. Nellie Weaver Hall, Riley Gym, when it's raining, I put buckets out. I mean, that's where we're at.
Great, thank you.
The, one challenge on, on metal roofs such as Riley Gym, Nellie Weaver Hall, is the way they were constructed, they're overlapping metal and then they're, they're fastened and taped. Over time, with heat and cold, they can travel. The problem with that is, is that you may have a leak that started here, but it ends up over here. And it's really hard to trace back. So we've done, gone as far as where we've had to do repairs, is putting sprinklers on roofs to try to narrow down that section and do repairs. So it's really a challenge on it. This new type of, what we'll be doing with Garland is we actually will be sealing the whole roof in one seal. So we're not having a bunch of seams with penetrations.
So all of these repairs are actually protecting our assets further? It's not just because it's had useful life and it's because there's...
They're beyond useful life, yeah. There is, it's really protecting the assets. And the biggest concern and the reason why, and this is one of our biggest projects, is that if I don't, my other problem is I, I've been, in some of these, I've had to do tear-offs and cleanups because of mold that has come from these leaks. And so when I do that, then I run a health issue and other problems. So that's been part of it. Plus, we, we start to deteriorate the actual structural integrity of the asset when we start to have leaks and we get those in the sub panels of the walls, et cetera.
And which ones of these buildings actually generate revenue?
Nellie Weaver Hall does. We run recreation programs out of Riley Gymnasium and it produces revenues. If you were to ask me, do any of these, are they a full-service pay for yourself? No.
No, but there is revenue associated with it.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Riley Gymnasium, Nellie Weaver Hall, Senior Center is very, very good.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? The cost on the citywide roof projects, the cost, like, for instance, a snack bar, $30,000, how much of that is Garland product and how much of that is prevailing wage for burgers?
If they don't have those, I can get you that number though, or I'm pretty close to that. Because when I did it, I actually calculated the number with the consultant for the whole term, turnkey of the project. But I can break down the Garland product if we need to do that.
Since you go to the state for the Garland product itself, the price is pretty fixed.
Yes.
But it's the wages, prevailing wages that are gross.
By the way, most of this is all per language. This is all language, almost the bulk of it. Yes. Yeah, added that, by 805, I would say probably, you know, maybe $200,000 of that is going to end up being product and the rest is going to be wage.
And okay, when you're going to, once you know the actual prices, you're going to bring those schedules back to us?
We should get them. Yeah, part of our problem, you know, if some things is until I really actually get it out there, it's not going to work now. Product though, I can identify product costs for these. It's the wage one that I'm going to have to challenge for.
And these are going to remain as roofs, you're not going to increase your scope?
No, no. This, for this year's this. Now, in the future, we may have a whole roof, but right now, this is, this will help us tremendously. These are all in the shape where they need to be done. And in some cases, I have tear-off, which means I have tear-off that down to, beyond the decking has to come off on some of these. Particularly like the snack bars and the equipment, that's tear-off. It's not even, you know, going into machine builds or another material, I'm going to have to do tear-off on them. The only issue I will have on tear-off on something like that when I do a roof is the structure. If I have any issues related to, it's a joy to talk to the damage dealer, and then we may have some correction happening up there. And then we would, that would be part of the project. Or we will be built in within my contingency.
Just because there's been a lot of comments...
These things, delays things quite a bit.
I'm curious for, for instance, at Riley Gym, so that there's recreational programs there. So if we weren't to do, to choose to do, which is a very large project on this list, and the facility were, you know, not, are we at the point where that facility will now not be able to be open? And then how many youth are we not serving in our community if we make the choice not to make, to do that repair? If we were to do that, not like that's what I'm supporting?
That is a great question. And we're not there yet, but if the building becomes unhealthy due to mold or other problems, then it's a shut-down. And we would be putting thousands, in fact, Riley Gymnasium is one of the most heavily used facilities in the city.
And what are, you got ballpark numbers on that?
Over 150,000 users a year. Now, some of those are repeated.
And are those users or user visits?
Visits. So those would be participants, parents, et cetera. Dance program, upstairs at Riley Gym, we have a dance program in that.
But it's currently leaking now. The water damage is happening and then whatever happens from water can still be happening back. And the same thing at the Senior Center?
Yes.
And do you have any participation numbers on the users at the Senior Center?
At the Senior Center? Now, I can get you our whole user numbers on that. So we, for seniors, and those are repetitive numbers and visits and that type of thing, I would say that probably we're somewhere in there about, so 30,000 to 40,000 trips, I guess you could call it.
And those are the two largest ones. And then you just mentioned that we have a safety hazard for Fire Station 57, which is also very large.
Yeah, 57 is, is an issue. And then we have an issue because we have a contract with CalPhar to provide them a facility and it can't be enacted.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Question? If you didn't receive any Measure R funding, what other, do you have alternative funding that you could fall back on or? What I would end up doing is we would do patches. And then at some point, if it deteriorates to the point, which is the question I think Chad wrote up, is that we would have a choice of either going back to the city council and asking them to go dip into the reserve funds to make the correction and/or close the facility. Those are the options.
My question is, should we, can we vote or make motions and vote on each piece or do we have to do it as a whole?
Are you going to take one out of the, Johnny?
I would just like to comment on that.
Okay.
It just that, I'd rather see us do it all at the end because there are so many pieces here that we made, some of the other sections, we may choose to piecemeal and so maybe not this section, but some of the other ones. So it looks right now like it would be easier to do with that, but I think that there are some sections that come later that we might be looking to pull some stuff out of and package things differently.
Any other comments?
I agree with Chad. I agree with you all.
Okay. Okay, keep going.
This is the Sheriff's Substation project. This is the Sheriff's Substation project. And I think in your presentation, I'm gonna jump ahead to the summary I have to put in. Then we'll come back and get in line. Okay, let's talk about the Sheriff's Substation. I think, Terry, one of the questions you have is, how does that break down within the, this particular project scope? Basically, we're retrofitting and adding an upgrade to our current security system and digital cameras placed in various locations within the interior, exterior of the facility. In addition, we're adding IP video camera upgrades. We'll also be putting in, I know it says CAT 5, but it's actually in the spec CAT 6 that we'll be putting in for cabling for that, and PoE internet switch. The other security improvements will include circuit door release buttons and place the key location entrances in the facility. They also, for the sheriff, will trigger my video feed per respect that we've been working with them on. Current access to the building is controlled by smart card system. And we would also be looking at utilizing an upgrade, one, on the server plus the DVR. It's just inadequate for what we need now. This will also be an upgrade to the digital platform, because we are in, parts of it is analog and some is digital, but what I want to say, older versions. This would bring everything to the digital state of art that is what we're being, is what we're recommending here. The scope of work includes relocation of a server room currently shared by the armory and office supply. That improvement will provide a standalone communication arm and arm. Those facilities are shared right now. It's not really, well, how we, what we would say is appropriate for the Sheriff's Substation. Exterior cameras and digital is about 32,000. Interior cameras, digital, 27. The server room expansion is about 10, DVR 10. The backup server is 40,000, just to add to that. That server will take care of both sheriffs and will also take care of the City Hall recommendations we're making for cameras. I do want to make one note, this particular unit will allow us to maintain records up to a year. One of the things that it, we've talked about with sheriffs, is that they can actually reduce that server's capabilities. It does degrade over time, so they have to decide which ones they want. But we can maintain a high resolution for one year with this particular server, which is something in some cases they're not allowed. The rack 1,500, new door signature locks about 12 grand. So the project on the sheriff's side is about 132,500. Then we go to the City Hall improvements. Again, this is to install new security systems, which we don't, do not have camera systems within City Hall right now. Provide IP video, CAT 6, cabling, PoE internet switch, crewed security. Part of that is all a one combination of one project brought together with the server and DVR. The project will include counter intrusion barriers, a security door release button will be placed in key location entrances of the facility. Currently, access to the building is controlled by smart card systems in City Hall side, only in a very few spots, maybe with the connections from City Hall to the sheriff's side. So this would change that throughout this project. And an ADA grade in parking stalls and rails at City Hall. A new sign identifying City Hall will be part of the project along with a system file management room renovation. And then, all data captured from cameras and recording stations will be stored on a server. That's a joint server that we'll be using, capable of maintaining such data for up to one year. In this particular project, the exterior cameras are about 25,006. Exterior camera, remember, we have nothing here right now. Interior cameras about 27, door signature locks 15, panic emergency hardware about eight, backup server about 17. And that's to take part of ours. We may not be able, that may become a savings based on my last conversations I had right before I left for vacation with our security company. The DVR for the City Hall side, counter barriers, entry points, 110, City Hall sign, 20,000, exterior painting of City Hall, 60, file management room, 9,000, ADA ramp and rails about 25, professional services, architectural engineering, about 30,000. One of the things is the, whatever that barrier will be on the counters. Currently, right now, we're at positions of the counters, there is no barriers at all from the public to across the counter. The architect will help in designing whatever that may be. And we'll have to look and see how that's going to flow within the budget. So these are our estimates, and some of these are estimates. Camera side or the security side are pretty confident in all those numbers. So the total is 352,500. The Sheriff's Substation is 132,500. City Hall improvements are 3352,500. I have a contingency in there. And then, we have additional funding from the old successor agency. This was identified in our capital improvement budget, which would mean that the major power request would be about 204,000.
We don't have this information.
It should've been in the PowerPoint.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's in the second PowerPoint.
So, 2 other...
The one that was provided last week. On the diagram.
Well, yeah, when I was handed it, I recorded the name from the slide, and that doesn't happen.
So when I was... Sorry.
Well, that's okay. I mean, at least we will get it and talk about it some more, so.
Now, do you have a question if I can...
No, mine's still the old one. I don't have that information. I have two stats that are exactly the same, and him too, so, him too. So none of us get this information. I haven't.
Is it in the top?
You don't have it either.
Should be after, there's a section that says it in there.
No, it's the same, it's the last page, go to the second last page.
So right after budget revisions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's what the teams are about.
Okay. Thank you.
Not a problem. Here with the news, how about?
Okay, good summary. I need some...
Okay.
She wants to eat a fry, let her eat.
You do have it. No. It's, forget last week. It was really good, except for the... You're the Amanda to the high there.
Should be the same. Turn it out on the same file, report. Unless she has a very fast one.
The first one.
Yeah. But if you second one, then everybody should have the same numbers.
Okay, we'll share.
The revision page, I'm back.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so any questions on the City Hall improvement security?
It's not a question. Brian, it sounds like these are not just one project. It's actually a couple different pieces, a couple different vendors. So, and these are all estimates, you haven't obviously gone out to the...
The city has a assigned security company, so the estimates are from security purposes, cameras and all that.
Those already been set up to bid.
Yeah, and it's built into already the infrastructure we've already created. So to recreate that, with these costs would go up significantly.
Any part of these numbers are potential changes when you do get ready to project or set the project out? Or is this...
The security, we would send out, we'd go straight to the vendor. But the other parts of it, like, for example...
ADA ramps?
That would all be bidded out.
Could be different prices.
Yeah, and also painting, the signage, the counter barriers, once we've designed that, then that would go all out to bid as well. And all of those, those particular parts would be all part of independent attributes. These are estimates right now, that as soon as we can bring some of those numbers back, when I have really art numbers on them. And some of this, we could do in base, the security stuff, we could start right away. And then the other parts are gonna take six months probably to get through some design issues and stuff till we get to a bid process.
The counter barriers, that, the entire City Hall or just...
Just where we have the counters, which would be up here to the front, city clerks area.
So this whole area would be glassed off?
Well, we don't know that yet. And that's been one of the questions is, they don't want, we don't want it to be too intrusive. We want it to tell us to be welcoming. So the architect will work with the staff to be able to do that, to make sure that we provide the product there that is, doesn't cage everybody in. So that's been part of the discussions, particularly the comments like over in the planning side. We do a lot of this back and forth. So we still have, in the design, we have to figure out a way to be able to service the contractors and customers who come in. The finance area, which, and Gina's area, which is a pretty good section over here, we're looking at a better, more secure area for that particular finance clerk who sits in that area, who deals with cash and money all in all. One of the things that here, I identified, and I jumped over it real quick, is the issue of panic buttons as well in specific locations where cash registers are.
In relation to counter security, how many instances we had, if you know, it may be a question for the tenant, but have we had any instances where we needed protection here in Norco in our counter for problems?
I'll answer my situation. From my experience, we have had not, no, we have had comments or threatening type comments made that were taken very seriously. However, a physical type of situation, not to my knowledge.
How about...
And we had one just a few months ago.
I think that in America, it's not, if it's gonna happen, it's when it's gonna happen.
Yeah, you're right. But you're going to see this type of look more and more frequently as facilities like City Halls, county agencies, things are gonna be, become subject towards...
I'd like to ask about...
Gina just dealt with it.
Finance is not an issue, I'm not gonna fight.
She just dealt with one, that's all.
No, it's, we can aim the customers. So we're very fortunate to have some individuals who sit up front. Chad may hear some loud voices, so he'll come forward and address it. But in terms of, it's very open. So it would be nice to have some kind of space in between. And I believe the renovation was about 10 years ago.
Yeah, and they didn't really look at barriers on the counter.
And it really isn't ergonomically correct. It's all that. So we're gonna be looking at the big picture, but in terms of safety, it's still very open.
Bill, any questions?
No.
Come on. Tara?
As the other community member, as Kelly brought up, that there's a lot of items like combined into here into one big project at City Hall. I'm curious of the painting.
I'm sorry, what?
The painting?
Yeah.
So $60,000 for painting. I clearly understand the use of the security cameras and the need and panic buttons and the ensuring that we have appropriate security for staff. I'm curious about the building. I will admit to not having stared at it while I drove up and flew here from traffic, but I'm curious what the need is there.
It has not been painted, to my knowledge. And I've been here a long time, so... But it's 30,000 square feet filling, and this would, we have, what we have is a bubbling in paint that was existing from the original concrete paint, I believe, is basically chipping and falling off. So it's really an exterior look. It's also the, it helps protect the assets too. So although it's a concrete building, it's pretty solid, it does have paint that is starting to fade in color and look. One of the things we're also gonna be doing in here, it's not clearly identified, is I have some water seal issues that are the address also in the exterior part when they do the painting. We've, in this last range, we've had, we're actually getting penetration through the windows, and we actually put it, Chad's office out, had to tear out part of the carpet because of wetness and mold started to send in, and that had to be treated. And then we had another section over in the painting area. So we do have some issues like that, that'll be part of that painting treatment as well.
So as far as the painting, you'll be repairing whatever molding or whatever?
Yeah, it's just the exterior part. We'll be dealing with everything outside, any cosmetic issues, repainting the building and then doing that. And the concrete, on a concrete building, the paint is a different paint than what we normally see. So I've been here 20, for years, it's never been painted, so I would imagine when it was done, I believe this building was originally done before the city purchased it, and I wanna say around 1976. So it's lasted a long time before it faded, is in the condition it is.
And then, when you're installing any of the exterior cameras and whatnot, is that going to cause damage that then you would need to paint? Like, do we try and match the old paint? Like, is there anything here that's gonna...
We would require any of this, that contractor has to make sure all those things that sail, all penetration recovers. That would result in work issues that they would need to cover in that way. If there's any issues regarding discoloration, then we would probably make them come back and we'd make them touch it up. The timing on this is a little different, as we start the security, I could probably do the security before it'd be done, before I get some of the other things done as far as the interior counters and all of that.
And that's what I was curious about, is the timing of the painting. Is that, you know, does it make sense to be doing it now because you're gonna be doing exterior stuff, or is this a totally separate project?
What I would do is, I would time the project. I would do the exterior painting after the security system was put in.
Madame Chair, our human resources manager, Mona Pakanon, would, she likes to add to the presentation from staff.
I would like to add, in regards to some of these items here, in regards to security for staff. So for me, that's very important, especially with OSHA as well. We are required to have a safe work environment for our employees. And those are certain things that, is something that we haven't been able to do in the past. So if we're able to do that, that would be beneficial to the employees. And in regards to also the painting, a couple years back, we had customer service training, and it encompassed surveying the employees regarding customer service for our external customers and things like that, and just the, how can we, is our facility inviting? And those are certain things that came out of that as well. So it's coming from a lot of the employees, so that was part of it, just, is our facility inviting? Is our sign, our sign is peeling? So, you know, if, when our citizens come in, can they be proud of City Hall? And then the ADA ramps and rails, you know, instead of being proactive, not, you know, we've had individuals trip in the front. So if we can have those items taken care of in this instance, that would actually be proactive on our part to make sure that we don't have claims in the future, because, you know, we have different individuals that come to through our hall, through our doors. So, you know, again, I'm thinking that some of these things are being proactive. Like you said, it's not if it's gonna happen, it's when it's gonna happen. So it's better to know that we're doing the best that we can to, you know, the safety for our employees and safety for the public as well. And the cameras, we actually had one of our employees' personal vehicle was vandalized. So, but we had no cameras. And we tried to work with the school district, maybe if they had cameras pointed at their way, they didn't have any either, or there was nothing that they could help us with. So again, it's for the safety of the employees, but also safety for the citizens. And overall, we're here to, for the citizens, and if we could be working in a safe work environment, we could do our jobs better.
My understanding is the ADA went into effect many years ago.
1992. Pardon? 1992.
92, okay. So for the City Hall, you have $25,000 for ADA ramp and rails. And also on the Sheriff's Substation, there's $25,000. So to me, that seems like a lot of money to comply with a law that's been on books for what's that, 37 years? So when is it required to do ADA compliant parting?
Anytime you're going to do an improvement under the Americans Disabilities Act, that improvement must then be brought up to whatever those standards are. I also have in here an ADA assessment. I also have in here an ADA assessment as part of that. The problem is, is our assessment that was done years ago has not been updated, and there's been changes. So that assessment will give us a full evaluation. Why is that important, someone might ask, to infrastructure? It will lead to infrastructure. Under the Americans Disabilities Act, you must have a transition plan. You must also have a capital improvement plan that identifies what those transitions will be done and when. So typically, that would be, end up probably being a 20-year transition plan. So when projects are done or certain areas are worked in, then that particular area must come up into those new ADA standards, whatever they are at the time that is adopted. And those are amended as we go along. So our problem, particularly with this ramp, we're pretty good everywhere, but we have one ramp area, because of the way the parking lot is, is, has to be elevated, so more asphalt needs to be added in that area, so that when they exit the van, that they are coming in and actually landing on a pad, and then there has to be a transition from that pad, and then there must be a path of travel to the front. So it's one of those things that has to be done. And what we do now, whenever we do an improvement, we will try to bring it up to those standards. The assessment that I'll be recommending later will actually give us a picture for the future, and really show us where are we deficient, where are we good, what needs to be done. And that's why we need to do an update on that. Any further questions?
Members say.
By the way, my cost also includes the engineering, because I have to have an engineering drawing that has to be done on that as well.
Do you have any questions?
Okay, I wanted to know, first of all, how much of this building, because it's obviously school district and the city hall, how much of it is the city responsible for painting the exterior, so is it half?
30,000 square feet.
So it's this half? Okay.
But once we do it, I should, the school district will want to do theirs too.
And I just also wanted to make a couple of comments. I think it's very, very important that we have a beautiful city hall, that when people come to the city of Norco, and they come, because it's one of the first places you will come and get a business license or planning, that it's important that we present ourselves well. So I support that. And I also support the barriers, because I have worked in several small cities, and it can be very scary at times when people come in from the public. I mean, you have people coming that are obviously intoxicated or high, and they're threatening you. It can be extremely, extremely frightening. So I 100% endorse and agree with those changes, and cameras, obviously, because it's just a strange world we live in now. Okay, any more questions on city hall and? So is that it?
No, I still got some.
Okay, I gotta go backwards.
We're done.
Well, I went over everything last time, because those were the ones for questions, so I'm going to go backwards.
You've got to run through it. You can't do it on that. No, they don't have to set up that.
It's after you keep rolling.
Yeah, but do I hit swipe?
No, Gina has it.
Okay. Just go to the very beginning of.
18 minutes.
We have three quarters.
It did slide more to the beginning.
Chad also. Almost there. This next year, I'm proposing to replace the AC units. I have approximately 17 units that need to be replaced here at city hall and at sheriff's area. And then at the senior center in the kitchen area in Riley Gym, I have evacuation, evac coolers that need to be replaced. It's about 230,000 to do this. Just recently, for your knowledge, unit number eight here at city hall caught on fire, and it is 29 years old. And it, what it was, was a gearing and the belt. So the gearing wore out, and the belt actually started to drag and cause a fire. This is the second time we've had a problem with unit eight. Now, unfortunately, city clerk's office was here, it was right around 6 o'clock, so we were able to dispatch fire and take care of the situation. City hall was very smelly for a while, but we got that out. But it just goes to show you where those units are old. They're, and as I put money into, I'm really, really throwing good money to that. There is nothing in these units that would even meet the energy efficiency that we're required to do right now. So replacing these units would, what we may see too is, and I feel, I think this was a question, and I don't really have a hard number on that, but it would be interesting to see over a year's worth of use. I think we'll have a reduction in utility costs and also maintenance costs. So this is what, this would be replacing, at these facilities, which I thought were primary facilities that need to be replaced. And so now, there are 26 units at city hall, we've replaced some over the years, but there are still 17 left. And those are, two of those units were 10-ton units, and the unit eight that went out was a 10-ton unit.
Questions?
So if we were to fund this one, do you think we're actually going to then preserve additional funds ongoing in the general fund that's paying for utility costs and other expenses?
Yeah, I believe what I'd spend annually just to keep these going with baling wire and duct tape, we're going to save that. And by the way, that's not in hundreds, that's in the thousands. So I think we would, I need a year to do that, and I would love to come back and talk about what we'd saved. But we will be able to look at the energy efficiency on these units compared to what we did, and then we'll have to do a kilowatt comparison. But I believe from a utility standpoint, we're going to save money. And then number two, providing everybody follows the regulations, these will also be controllable, so they're not used on off times. Then the other part of that will be that, I think from a maintenance side, we're going to see a reduction in costs annually.
So the city hall is AC, Riley Gym is just the cooler, is the senior center also AC?
No, it's cooler. And let me explain to you why. It has AC. So we're okay right now. Now, don't mind, we end up having to replace ACs everywhere. But the swamp cooler that is at, is in the kitchen. So you have a commercial stove in the kitchen there. So when you have a commercial stove and the exhaust is going, it's compensated by returning fresh air by a swamp cooler. And so that's how that, it's designed that way. Is that the most proficient way of doing it? No, but it is one of the most economic ways of doing that. And so we, because we do senior mills and programs there, that kitchen's very important. So that swamp cooler that needs to be replaced there basically brings in the fresh air, but we're sucking out air based on the good ancil system that we have over the stove there.
And we don't have any calculated analysis on the cost yet. We haven't been able to achieve that yet.
No, no. Until I really get into it, I know, we've done an evaluation on the number of units, what units we need to replace. I could do more analysis, but I honestly, to do more analysis, and I, I would have to bring in a mechanical engineer to do that, and I'm going to spend somewhere between 10 and 20K just to do that. And I think in a year's time, I would be able to do that.
I don't want to spend more money to figure out how much money we're going to save. But sometimes you have staff that, that just can do the back of the napkin kind of thing, but.
And I believe we can do some of this analysis ourselves, because I think one of our biggest users here for energy is our air conditioning units. And all the AC units also have heat pumps, so that also produces the heat as well.
I have a question. So what is the tonnage, air conditioning tonnage of the city hall and sheriff's?
The average is about, is five, I have five, seven, and then I have 10-ton units up there. The spec that we're using, we'll probably be putting two 12-ton units, because they cover a large area, we'll get more maximum out of that. But the number of units ranging from five or seven. Typically, most of them are seven tons, and some of the smaller areas that are cooled, that's a 5-ton unit. Now, I do have a couple of special units that we have, one in the IT room. The reason for that is we have two specific wall units in there. That room has to read, be at a certain temperature consistently because of the equipment that's in there, and that runs 24/7. And it actually has an alarm on, so that the temperature ever drops, it alarms us, and we have to go find out what the problem is. And then in the sheriff's station, we have a special unit, which they call it for chilling. So when they come out of the heat during the summer, that room is kept on 24/7 as well, and that's where the officers can get out of the heat and get recovery and hydration. But those are smaller units, and we're looking at around three-ton units. Those are very specialized areas. The rest of them range, couple of five, and the rest are seven, and then there are two 10-ton units.
So it's maybe 35 or 40 ton?
On total?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we looked at 17 units for replacement.
17 units? Okay. Have you put together a cost delta, changed out the swamp cooler, evaporated cooler on Riley Gym to an air conditioning unit?
The gymnasium, those are going to run about 15,000 out of that. If you've seen Riley Gym, the units are huge, the evac coolers. There is no air conditioning in the core area, it's just circulation error with evacuation cool, evac coolers. The offices and the dance area are air conditioned. The unit at the senior center is a smaller unit, and that's going to run probably under 5,000.
Because it seems to me, with the Riley Gym having a lot of athletic activity, that's where you'd want drier air rather than adding more moisture like the evaporative coolers.
Yeah.
So is that an additional?
It depends on what is, when, if we did, if it's humid outside, we don't run the evac coolers, because it just, it doesn't work if it's humid. But it does help to circulate that air and put some moisture in it, because it gets pretty warm during the summer. The, strictly the one with that senior center is about the stove. If I didn't have a commercial licensed kitchen in there, I wouldn't do that. Also, part of our cost in here is because of the height of the building, all of our units are cranked to the top too. That includes the crane process.
Are you aware of any instances in Riley Gym where a child or adult has been overcome by the heat and humidity?
Yes, but I don't know that it's necessarily related to the evac coolers. Last summer, we had some pretty good heat. We brought in fans, the large, which I call shop fans, and that helped just move air. But it's, during the day, it can get pretty intolerable. One, because it's a metal building, two.
Can you clarify how much you just said was if we wanted to do the AC versus doing the evaporated cooler there? Is that, is that what you just asked?
If, I think what he was saying is, I, our estimates are around probably somewhere under 20,000 would replace the evacuation coolers. So about 210,000 is AC units.
Okay, so.
So to replace the swamp coolers in Riley Gym with air conditioning?
Oh, no, that, we, I'm sorry, that's the question. That's not even part of, if we were to look at that, that would be a separate thing I would need to come back and study. I would have to bring in a mechanical engineer for that. And you're talking probably to do, by the way, that building is 15,000 square feet. So to do a building of that size, to bring an air conditioning system in, and if we want to look at that in the future, you're probably talking 250,000. By the time you include the ductwork, the engineering, the type of units. The challenge, and I'll tell you, because I have looked at this. The problem with Riley Gymnasium is that the type of building, or Butler Building that it is, is the units and the size of units putting them on the roof. Structurally, it would not hold those units. So we would have to look at a side unit type of situation and bring the air in from the side. It could be, that's more challenging from a design standpoint than on the roof. Roof designs are much cheaper and easier to do.
Members say.
You see everything, go ahead. You see everything on the, on TV and everything about solar. Has the city ever looked at going solar to offset the cost of utilities and anything different?
We have, and for flat roofs is where we would need to look, and in fact, actually, I just had a discussion with one of the companies related to it. Since we're coming into the last year of Greek Bay School Year, one of the things that we've looked at is, is that we haven't found really with the investment, okay, that the payback is there for us. However, through the PPA programs, that may be, and the PPA programs are basically, they do it, sell the energy, you get the, what it does is basically reduce user cost. That may be the way and the best, most effective, because those programs are probably the most successful out there right now. And that's something we could take a look at. Clark Arena up at Ingalls was designed and inspected to actually look at that in the future. Technology, when we first built it, the, the way the arenas are set, and which would give you a lot of space up there for that, was not very functional based on where the sun comes and ends. So, but today's technology is different, and the panels are different. So it is worth taking a look at. It's something we should explore. I think if we're looking at public buildings, that I think probably the most cost-effective is like a PPA.
Do you know, can you estimate how much it would save? I mean, you have $2 million here for all your projects, and how much would offset to look at solar?
Yeah, we haven't done the analysis to give you any really hard numbers, and like I would say, it's probably where we would, I've looked at those from actual, the capital side and that, and early on, when we were looking at solar, as it was getting a little popular, it didn't see that in 20, we're replacing in 20 years where we get our payback. So I think a PPA program's a little different, where there's some power, and what you're doing is you're reducing your utility bill. And then you would have, that's delta, would be the savings you would have to the general fund. So that's something worth looking at. I don't really have a doubt, just to really give you good information for that. But it's worth, it's really worth, let's take a look at it.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
Parking lots, this is Riley Gymnasium. We bought some time on this particular project. We were able to, through Chad's assistance, we were able to get a slurry on this project. But as Chad was talking about roads, this, this particular parking lot is degraded, and it's not just a slurry, you just need, the slurry has bought us time. It's not a crack and seal situation. This is reconstructed. There are sections, and then we have a drain that is clogged, that's going to need to be a cleanout done, because a lot of the gravel material from the road has ended up in that drain, so we have to correct that as well. And that's a connection to the storm drains on, on that lot. The, this is a large area, it, it needs reconstruction. If we had to look at prioritization, I could probably get another year at it, but this is one of those ones that needs to get done, because it's a liability waiting to happen. So it's 295,000, and that's based on our engineer's estimate, including design, reconstruct, and also, we also got some estimates from one of our local paving contractors, Harding Harlow.
So that includes ADA, right?
Pardon?
ADA is an issue on that property?
Yeah, we would meet all the new ADA issues with this as well.
Are you going to fix all those weird driveways and those weird halts and?
The problem, yeah.
There's just a lot of straight stuff there.
If you go there, it has like this really bumped elevation there. So some of that, we, the engineers are going to take a look at that for, one, accessibility issues. So is, I know it's a high number, but it is something that we don't have choice but to do at some point.
I don't think it's high at all. I've been in that parking lot.
And it's.
Oh, it's horrible.
And we, we got a slurry done five months ago. That bought us really time. Otherwise, we're at the point in some section that we may have had to actually section that section off.
Just to clarify, just so you know, the city didn't pay for that slurry. It was a contractor for the street slurry project. He needed a yard. Brian gave him space up at Ingalls. In exchange for that, he slurried the parking lot. So we didn't actually pay for that, just so you're aware.
It was a good deal for us. It bought us time. And so, but it is one of those ones and it's, the degradation is, is significant, particularly in the degradation. When you start to break down the road and you're in native, then you know you have one. And so your subgrade is gone and you're into the, and we are in that situation. Of course, right now, we're a little bit better because of the slurry. But there, there are sections in there that are complete, going to be reconstructed sections. Any questions?
No question. Is this a big cost or estimate?
Those are estimates and, because I haven't bid it and I can't do it until I actually have a project. But my numbers are based on our engineer and so they could be a little bit on the higher end. But I also reviewed those numbers with Hardy Harp, who's one of the, does a lot of pavement contract work for us too. So I think we're in the ballpark right there. One, because of the deterioration of the parking lot. This is insulation. Again, at Riley Gym, we're about 15,000 square feet. Someone was asking numbers, we have, serves over 84,000 people annually. That particular area, the, one, some of it's from a leaky roof. If we don't fix the roof, we shouldn't do anything with the insulation. Because it's just going to deteriorate the insulation. The insulation is literally falling out of, off of the walls and off of the ceiling. And it's at that point. So the cost for that, it's a large area. Again, I, we haven't bid this. We've gotten contractors to look it over and give us a price. Until we really get into a competitive price, this is our best estimate at this time. Could be less once we get into a competitive process. And this would be a competitive bid.
So it's been a while since I've been in Riley Gym. Girl on the move away, so I went there. But I know that there was an insulation problem. This would have been about in the early 2000s. And it looks like it was a spray-on type or something. Is there another insulation?
So we redid it in around 2000, we redid the spray-on insulation. So from that time to this time, it's now falling off. And part of that is because of leaky roof too. But it's falling off. The spray-on insulation though is one of those things that is a, probably every 10, 15 years, you're going to be redoing it. That's just again. The other issue here is we've looked at a couple of other products which we may, right now, this is for a spray-on insulation. We're going to look at a batting product. When I remember, when we talked to the council the other day, I'm going to look at some numbers on a, on a, when I say batting, if you look in warehousing, you'll see actual batting is in between the joists. And so we're going to look at that. That may be a lot more expensive. For numbers I got, they were, but we're going to look at that. And if, if we could do that, that would give us longer time as opposed to what we have right now. Part of this is so bad that we have to scrape it completely off. It's not just where you can go and touch up and keep going down the road. It's going to be scraped off. That's why the cost is higher.
That's why I'm thinking, scrape it off, put batting in some sort of Hardy board or something.
Ideally, ideally, that would be ideal for us. And if, if we did that, we would need to, I don't know what those numbers are. We're kind of working on that part right now to see what that kind of costs with. I'm sure, I believe it's going to drive the cost up. I don't think we can do it for that same price. But it, I think it's worth looking at because if, if we, if we were to scrape this and put it on, somewhere between the next 10 to 15 years, we'll be looking at putting, redoing it again. The difference will be with the roof redone and not having leaks everywhere, there should, it should be easier to maintain at a certain level. And that's been some of our challenges, the maintenance aspect, keeping that asset up and not having those problems. And now we're at a point that if we do some of these items, we still need to keep the maintenance side done so that we don't continue to have to come back having a few years, but then it's more of a 10 or 20-year type situation.
Is there an issue with rodents making houses in, in batty? And would you have to pay for exterminators or something? Because there are mice and that do not go.
Oh, yeah. There's some big ones too.
Yes, there are.
Obviously, that, that is potentially there and we, we have a pest control service. We would, if that becomes an issue, we'd have to look at the batting. I have, don't have a lot of experience with it, so that's something I'm exploring. I don't know if, I would imagine warehouses do have issues with that. The difference here is we don't have food and other type of things to help draw it. But we do have a number of rodents with errors.
I have a question. Why then, if there's a better way to do it, would we not be patient and wait and come back with putting the Hardy board, putting, you know, because this is what Measure R money's supposed to be used for, is facilities and maintaining. So why are we band-aiding it and spending all that money and not coming back with a better solution?
It's not a band-aid. The insulation and from when we did it in 2000, the technology is much better. So it, it is, but it's the type of thing we're going to have to every 10 to 15 years or whatever. The difference is the cost would be less on that. If we're going to look at the batting process, and I wouldn't have a problem if, it's pretty ugly. We probably, if anything, then need to do at least the cleanup on it, tear it down. If we're redoing the roof, that at least buys us time. But I can't have insulation falling on people. I need to clean that up. If we can do the scrape off, then we could look at other alternatives, but I'm pretty sure the costs are going to be higher. But we could definitely look at that. And then, as you said, if that's a point for Measure R, maybe that's something for discussion next year. I don't have a problem looking at that. If this is what the committee would like me to do, I don't have a problem doing more analysis on that. But what I would then do is look at, at least do the cleanup of getting that stuff from falling on people.
Do you have to do the cleanup if you do the batting? Do you have to take what's there off?
Yeah, because the problem is, is that the spray-on is not only in between, but all of our joists and stuff are sprayed as well. And that's coming off of the actual metal.
Again, if you were to cover it, it's insulation. So it's still an insulation.
The batting goes in between the joists. So if you have two versions running this way, it's in between. So what we would do is do the insulation in between and then the joists or whatever within, on those would be scraped, cleaned, painted. That's definitely what you would do.
So to support Susan's idea, we have to do the cleaning. Where, no matter which we do, you have to do the cleaning. The only thing that we're possibly doing is the, the people who would scrape it are likely the same. Does the insulation company do the?
Scraping.
The scraping? And so we could possibly be paying two separate deployment costs, but that would be the only additional?
Yeah, I don't want it to be all that much. It depends on the analysis that we do. But it, it definitely, if that's the direction you want to go, I, I still would recommend, we, we have it falling off of the walls. And not in little pieces, it falls off in chunks. And because, we're lucky because it's a paper product, it at least is lightweight.
So there's not a breathing tissue?
No, well, particles. It has no asbestos or any of that. It, it's an approved type of material. We, when it comes down, we clean it up like water. But if, if you started having a whole bunch more and it starts stirring up dust or whatever, then that becomes an issue. Right now, we do, we clean up as fast as the dust coming out. And if you go in there right now, you can see where sections are just falling off.
That's what makes sure I'm clear and understand. 198,000 here is a best guess estimate for a current replacement of the current type of insulation we have in the roof, interior of Riley Gym at this time. In my mind, I would think that if we're going to, was Riley Gym on the citywide roof? It was, right?
Yes.
So I would think that that might be a project to take out, ask for Measure R fund's money to do the roof and insulation as one project and actually get the estimates, engineering, decide what it is we actually need. Is the batting, is the spray-on, is this the best, what's going to be beneficial for the community, the funds and everything as one whole project? Instead of just saying, okay, here's 198,000, here's the roof, and then do it. In my mind, I would, I would want that as a project within the Measure R request, say, you know what, I need 319,000. Do, this is my whole scope of my project. Here's my objective at the end. That would just be my thought. That's my discussion on this part of it.
Just to give you, it's a good thought. The difference is the trade. If we do that, we're coming out to a general contractor versus I go right to a roofing contractor. So I'm going to pay less. The problem is the roof is in dire need of fixing.
I'm okay with that too. That's fine, it's great. I mean, decide what type of insulation you want. Decide what, because we're not sure to what insulation you want. Maybe I'm hearing now, maybe the council is going to ask you to check something out. That's what I heard, right?
Yeah, they asked me to take a look at the batting. That's why, that's what I'm actually doing right now.
So if we had that as.
Which means that the investment might be greater, but you may get more on time out of it. And I'm okay with doing that. I do believe if we wanted to look at this, that we at least clean it up so that it's not, pray the dust, it's not doing that. And I could, I mean, we're going to be, again, I can come back with some numbers on that. If that, if you guys wanted to look at that separately, we could do that.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Sorry. So in the future projects, you have noted here smoke detector, security system, electrical stuff. So if you were to change the way you're doing insulation, would it impact any of these other future projects that you need to do so that you, you need to pair them up? Or like, or we, I just want to make sure we're, we're sequencing this?
The smoke detectors are already in there. We just have to make sure that because they're hooked up into the ceiling, we just have to, that needs to be, make sure that they're not damaged or anyway with that work, that would be a contract bid. Some of them may need to be replaced. When we last did this, we're looking at really almost 17, 18 years right now that that insulation lasted us. So it's not a bad term, but it, it, but it's been deteriorating for, for more than the last six, seven years too. It's been slowly doing it, so. But all of those would have to be part of that process is us taking a look at that. And normally, we would do that, that'd be part of their contract, that they cannot damage any of our smoke detectors up in the ceiling.
I'm just wondering if any of these other projects, if you change what you're doing for the insulation, if it impacts any of these projects? So the paving project or whatever you're doing, electrical, because I don't know what they are. I'm just curious if there's any impact if you change what you're doing to futures of it? If it makes sense to add any of these in or take it out or do something different?
Because of the insulation just falling down, it was on our critical get-done. However, as we talk a little bit more, if we really want, we're looking at trying to invest in facilities that they use, then some of these could be combined into that project to look at. Just to let you know, on the capital side of this, we have the sports court being replaced this next year. And the reason for that is, is that it, it's served its time. We have a synthetic court. And so it's served its time. And at the point where my underground layers have deteriorated, so I have actually bubbling in the court. So I've had to make repairs in there. At some point, I have to replace that whole court. And so that's in the prop, that's in, that has to get done. That's becomes, that's a safety issue. So we're going to be replacing that in this upcoming fiscal year, but that's coming from a different source. The, these other items in here will certainly could be looked at or combined into a bigger project. And I'd be happy to, for us to sit there and, as you would like to. At minimum, we do need to do the cleanup. Thank you, I'll go to the next question. ADA, we kind of briefly talked about this. This would be doing all of our new upgrades. This would be bringing, updating all the old plans. And us actually providing an assessment for public buildings and parks citywide. This does not include the public right-of-way, that's a separate one we would have to look at. This would include all public facilities and parks. And this would update our transition plan, capital improvement. It engages a whole process over a year. And this is to have a consultant to come in and do that. It also would help us in the future when we're looking at, what projects need to be done for our draw. Where are we deficient at? This is a, the Santa Ana River multipurpose, one of the trail connections that we were talking in our commission about. It's actually making the connection from the dike through the outer boundaries of Silver Lakes and then connecting the causeway to connect to the trail system that is over on the J C S D park. This would give us the, as part of the trail master plan, would give us that circulating loop. It connects all the way down. And there's a portion that J C S D is working on that will connect River Road. And that would give you a complete loop of that trail system. That is a multipurpose trail system. This also would include the, from the dike to the causeway, we believe that's only an equestrian use for hiker. The other sections, you pick up what we call a class one bicycle, bicycle pedestrian and equestrian on the J C S D side. That, we would make the connections, the point of connections there. The causeway was built, but the full connection of the trail system is not done. Just to give you a little added information, we all know the, the River Road Bridge, I'm sorry, River Road. That one was not. The Hammer Bridge will be done in the near future. The trail connection off the Hammer Bridge, which will have a multipurpose connection to it, will actually end up down towards the causeway as well. So those people crossing there will also have access to this. So this would be the design and the development of that. And this is something we've been talking about doing and making that full connection. It's something that I believe stuff, streets and trails have talked about. I know that Partial Liberation Commission has also talked about it. And that would give us our, our equestrian community actually direct access right now to the East Bell J C S D side. As well as all of the trails that connect down into the river from there.
Because we're using public resources to develop, to design and develop this trail, can you explain a little bit about what the intent for this trail is? If always for public use, will it ever be allowed to be closed for special events? Like what's the intent of this trail?
There, there are times, this is a, the Santa Ana River Trail and Parkway is a trail. Otherwise, it used to be called the Coast to Crest Trail. This really, this trail system is 100 miles that runs from basically Big Bear to Huntington Beach. The problem is through San Bernardino County and Riverside County, there are missing links or what I would call points of disconnection. It's something that Riverside County, the city of Norco, East Bell, J C S D, city of Riverside, all of us have been working to try to make those connections a reality. Every city has its for sure. The county is the lead agency. There is an MOU between all of those agencies and also an MOU between all three counties to see this thing through. There has been funding in the past. Actually, the trail portion coming off of the bridge will be paid for by the county. And so this is our contribution towards that. There is another. There is another connection that we're gonna have to make, which will connect over the Old Hammer, and that'll be a future phase that we'll look at. And we need more input from the community and commissions to really take a look at that. But this will create, right now, in the city, we're very lucky, where other communities don't have the equestrian component trail system. We have it already here. What we did do is create a class two and a class three bicycle pathway, really from the outskirts at Corydon and River Road from where Corona meets our city limits, all the way through the city, connecting up to Hidden Valley. We have both class two and class three bicycle trails existing right now. Obviously, we already have the equestrian component, and whether, and some of our questions use the trail system and some of them use the river. This would make, provide another connection, which that particular section would allow them to actually access over the dike, connect over to the causeway, and then also in there. Now, your question related to use, that's something we'll need to work out, because my concern is at the evenings that there may be, we may have to have it open early in the mornings, but at nights, I don't, my big concern is I don't want the homeless making encampments inside the causeway. So we would probably shut, close that off. This is similar to done in some of the L.A. County master trail systems within their areas. So we would probably look at something like that, too. The trail is usually, is available to public, but there could be curfews set that, you know, from ten o'clock to six o'clock at trail sections.
Would it ever be closed or an exclusive use situation for anyone else, or is it always to remain a public, a public use?
Will be public access. Right now, it does have use when Silver Lakes does use connection between there and soccer, but it's still public use through there. The difference would be, and that's something we'd have to work out with Silver Lakes, but I look at it right now as a public access for that. Now, could there be a point where Silver Lakes makes a request that it be closed for a soccer tournament where they're using both sides, soccer fields? Yeah, that request could be made. And then we have to do proper noticing to let people know. It also allows those, Silver Lakes also maybe do staging events out there as well, which they have not been able to do. And that would allow them to actually stage or do a trail ride out of that south, south section of Silver Lakes.
So it could potentially be closed to the public for users because of those effects?
That, just that particular section during a certain time, yes, that could be possible. You know, right now, I don't know if you've seen it, but we're doing it, we're hosting it with them, fireworks have been out there, fireworks show. And so certain sections, that'll be closed, that section will be closed, and it will only have emergency access to public safety.
But that's during the fireworks show, which is at night, which I try not to write my first at night often, so, okay. Yes. Did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I had some questions on the face, and so, so this segment would go from river, the bridge and river, correct?
There's already a connecting section already there. Not this, not this particular area.
But the class, what is it, the class three bikeways?
Uh-huh.
So that would go from, if I can unmute this correctly, so it goes from the Santa Ana River Crossing at the Silver Lakes to the existing trail system through Eastvale to River Road.
So coming off of the bridge when it's built, it'll end up with a class two through the causeway. When it connects to the J C S D property, it becomes considered a class one bicycle trail. That will connect to River Road.
So the bikeway and the pedestrian will not be completed? I'm trying to understand the difference between a one, two, and a three.
Oh, let me, okay. So a class one bicycle trail is not a phase. It's, it's a definition. Class one means that that trail is separated and has been specific delineation. A class true two...
So like from Hidden, Hidden Valley Nature Center, if you were to get on, that there's a horse trail and there's a, and a bike trail?
That's class one.
Okay.
Class two is similar to what we have on Corydon, runs from River Road all the way up to about Cedar. And that is where it's delineated on the ground. We have actually striping for parking on the side of the road, and then we have a specific, that's called a class two.
I write it frequently.
There you go. So the class three transitions off of Cedar, goes up to Alhambra and across, and then down through Detroit, and then connects. The difference is it's a bike route. So it says, their sign says this is a bike route. At Arlington and North Drive, or just a little bit to the east of North Drive, it transitions back into class two, then class one, when we get down to the Hidden Valley. So what we would do, right now, we have a class three all the way up to our city limits. Then the county picks it up, pardon, City of Riverside, and then down to Hidden Valley, it transitions into a class one. Goes to class three, two, then one. And so this would make those connections, providing a class two, a class one on the J C S D side, and it would make a connection for rest of the future for the bicycle portion. But right now, our equestrians don't have access to the causeway to that J C S D. This would provide our equestrian community to be able, actually to come up out of the river and actually access that trail connection and go through the causeway and be able to access the trail systems in that side town, or in these.
William Waring, did you have a question?
I do not, Mr. President.
No? Number compelling? Okay, I have a question. What's the timing on this?
With approval by Metro R, we would engage our engineer to start design phases of this, and then as soon as that could be done, and I would imagine, we could probably do that, because we have a lot of preliminary work already done, I would imagine we could do that within about ninety days and be prepared to go out with it. So I would see probably opening sometime in late fall or spring of two thousand twenty. Now, one of the things we would do, because of the access, the user types, we would work closely with the Parks and Recreation Commission and Streets and Trails. Anything that's related to the Santa Ana Trail has certain rules on it, we'll do by numbers as well. That's part of the old trail master plan.
No, is this part of the Santa Ana River Conservancy Plan?
No. It has its own, its own master plan, and the conservancy area is actually in the river. So they have a section within the river.
I'm not talking about the rivers, I'm talking about, you know, the master plans on the state level, where it talks about trails and, is this part of that?
Yes, it's part of the overall master plan, part of, recognized by the state of California. In fact, part of, refunding comes from the state of California.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, and actually, it's done through the coastal conservancy, is the agency who oversees this particular section of trail.
Thank you. I think that was specific to my question, because if, it's a, usually they have restrictions with public funds, but you can't restrict access at any point in time. So I'm just curious if we know that or whether we need to go and look, because usually with public resources like that...
The whole trail has, in every county or city within the system has restrictions, meaning that there are particular curfews. So if the trail runs through a park and that park is closed from, you know, dust to, then it's closure in that section.
But during regular, I guess, business hours, if you could, regular opening hours?
I think it probably would relate a lot to what the event and activity is. And so that's something I would, from a policy standpoint, we would discuss with the commissions.
Okay, and then policy on that would be the Streets and Trails Commission would then govern that?
Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation, okay, sorry.
But we, we collaborate a lot, particularly because it's a trail. And so there's a good relationship between the two. We have actually subcommittees that work together on that.
So there's a committee that'll actually establish the policy on that. I think that there's some concern in, in the public, is that the city is gonna spend this money to do this, and then it's just gonna be in addition to Silver Lakes, and then it will be taken over by Silver Lakes. And so I'm trying to get you to say that you're going to figure out how that's all gonna work and ensure that the equestrians and the bike users are not going to be inundated by, you know, the entire time, every weekend, it being a hundred percent Silver Lakes.
Now, I currently, right now, it's fenced off, so the access that we would have around there is not even used by Silver Lakes, and they don't take it over. Yeah, it's already fenced off, actually, for that trail connection.
I just wanted to say that, so that I understand.
The policies and stuff, though, typically would be, because of our park system, falls really under the Parks and Recreation Commission. Because I believe that there, the trail connection, our, our subcommittee of the commission would meet with the sub, we have a joint group, we would meet with that, and then that would come back as a, a policy for the Santa Ana River system. He's still may have his own rules, too.
So in, by doing this, if we thought that this was a, a great idea, because it is, you know, meeting the state's master plan, we're doing all these other things, that increases myself as an equestrian, that I would love to be able to have this access, so this is, this is great. But the concern, you know, has been expressed quite a bit, and I was, I was not understanding whether it was actually a possibility or not. But what you're saying is that there's another committee that's gonna govern that access, and if the public has those concerns, then they would go to that committee and express those concerns.
Let me add to that. Forget Silver Lakes out of the equation. It's, it's really an obligation we have through the MOU to do this.
Yeah.
To open that trail. Whether Silver Lakes ever uses it or never uses it is really irrelevant. It's part of the trail connection, an adopted master plan by the county board supervisors, our council, Eastvale's council, J C S D's board directors. So even if they ever, we ever open it for their use, we, we should be working on to make that connection so our community, as well as the region, can have access to that.
Perfect. Thank you.
So Norco is paying to open this section. What is the rest of the, what is the rest of the partners doing?
J C S D has completed their section to ours and said, walls in your court. We're connected to them. Right now, I don't have the ADA accessibility, I don't have the trail connection, and so there's grading issues, trail fencing, things like that that need to be done. At the levee, there are some areas that need to be done there to make sure that we protect the integrity of the levee, but also make sure we have access across from that.
And how about the city of Eastvale, are they pitching it?
Well, because the property is J C S D's, it doesn't belong to the city of Eastvale. So our partner is, now, saying that, the city manager for Eastvale is very open to be part of the discussion. Is there a financial commitment, though? But doesn't mean that if there's other improvements, it's not part of our discussion.
I was just curious, because it says that they're all cooperative, but they're all butting up to you, but then you're asking us to pay for the whole thing?
Yeah, part of our, a lot, large portion of the funding that was allocated through Prop 12 originally, which is managed by the coastal conservancy, it goes to the Riverside County Parks opening space. So we sit on a TAC committee, and part of that group goes through, and we try to set up projects. A, a big part of the issue for the master plan has been really the issue of downstream, really, from Hammer Bridge. When we get into Orange County Water District and those areas, they have not been, what I would say, the most cooperative in allowing us to really work with everybody. It's been a really long, and the other issue is environmental, the environmental and the trail. That's why it made more sense, since we already have the horse trail here, to bring our trail in, and our questions will go in the river if they want to, and do that. By the way, this particular section over the dike is part of River Trails Park. That's two hundred and seventy-seven acres. That is the city's land. And so that particular land would help in that connection as well. And I don't know if you've seen it, but we actually have a full trail system that our volunteers have mapped within that particular section.
Just to clarify, just so you understand what we're paying, we're asking to pay here. J C S D spent a ton of money developing the trail system all along the property through Eastvale. We're asked to spend almost two hundred thousand for this small piece. We're getting a significant amount of money from the federal government and the county parks organization to do the, the, to do the...
Bridge.
The, the bridge project that has the multipurpose trail across it, the, the feds are paying for that, and then the county is paying for the transitions that go from the bridge to the Silver Lake side and the transition that goes to Old River Road. So there's significant amount of money that's being provided to our benefit that ultimately we would have to pay for, that we have others that are paying for. So this is a very small amount of money, and what we could have had to, an obligation to pay for, is being taken care of by other agencies.
That's good to know.
You just said that Prop 68, because we're partners with the county and all the other cities, would be applying for additional funding through Prop 68 for this trail, because there are problems downstream out of Norco in the Corona area that need to be mitigated, because the key is to make, to get to Green River where we can make that full connection.
So you mentioned the money from other sources, federal government and others. So how long will that money be available? Is there a time limit by which we have to act?
Yeah, that, those funds, particular funds, have to be done by two thousand twenty-three, by January of that year, because they disappear in regards to getting that project done. The bridge project is supposed to be finished by the end of two thousand twenty-two, if early two thousand twenty-three, and it's on schedule to do that. So all those components, the, the bridge itself and the transitions, are all part of that project and will be done.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I do want to remind you that it is eight oh six. I don't know if you want to continue or if you want to take public questions on the items that have already been discussed, but just as a reminder...
I have one more slide, and then I brought all the ones.
Yeah, I want to continue with that slide.
Um, with that, so just continue.
One slide here and down for this doing. This is George Ingles. This is basically Nellie Weaver Hall.
I know you want to go home.
No, I'm fine. We'll be here as, as long as you want.
Ten o'clock, something?
Yeah, we're good.
This is, this is to replace the insulation in there. This is a sprayed-on insulation. We, this is a smaller building, of course, about ten thousand square feet. We've had penetrations from water damage through that insulation. This would be scraping some of those areas that they're doing it. I don't know that the batting aspect would work in this particular situation, it's a little different. The elevation of ceiling is much different than, than Y M Gym's. But this would actually clean that up, replace all of those particular areas, and we would be doing future projects, including exterior painting, interior flooring, padding, and those things. And those would be things that we would discuss later on in the future if we were ready to. But I just invested in the A C units at Nellie Weaver Hall. For me to continue to meet the Title 24 requirements, I need to upgrade the insulation. Now, what the council had asked is for me to continue to look at, so I'm gonna look at the batting. I don't know if the application will be appropriate here, but we're gonna look at it for this particular area. The roofing is a little bit different than Riley, and it's not as open because of the way the A C's ducking is set up. So it is something we could take a look at, but I really need to do this to me, to get my, to keep the air conditioning. And one of the questions will, well, what if you, the issues on the A C units, if we cannot maximize the insulation, what we do is we end up cutting the life expectancy of those units down. So when they're not functioning, now, Nellie Weaver Hall, there's some other things done, some other doors and weather stripping and things like that, which will be looked at other projects. Some of that's being done currently right now, and some of our maintenance money that we have, but some of that still has to be looked at. The big part of the project is the insulation. So really, that's the bulk of this project, is really that I want to make sure that I protect the investment we made in the A C units.
So with Title 24, is there a time limit on which you, insulation won't have to be included?
No, what, my interpretation from the state is, is that when you do a project, you need to meet Title 24. If you don't, you're subject to suspension.
Okay, so we have A C units, they need to meet Title 24 if we do insulation, and it's gotta be done. But there's no time limit, I mean, if we waited six months, a year, two years?
It's, to answer that, is, yeah, if we waited, as long as we do the roof and the links, we can look at that. The issue would be, are we subject to, because we did the other improvements, are we subject to potential citation from the state of California? The answer would be yes, because we didn't meet. They're gonna say, if you did this, you need to do this. Now, is there a Title 24 guy running around doing all that? I don't know. But in looking at insulation. So when we do an improvement, we're really, every time we do an improvement, we try to bring it to whatever. So the roof project to me is a critical thing here. Insulation could come later on if, if that was a choice of insanity and we could look at it maybe even some other parks and projects.
Any more questions?
So as far as revenue associated with this, um, this facility, so specific to Nellie Weaver Hall and the whole event center, obviously. So at Nellie Weaver Hall, do you have any idea with the, like, as far as the booking capacity and where we are with the use of it? Are we, are we at the point where we're, we're using it to attract ability or is there, you know, what's the demand?
Based on our existing resources and level of staffing, we are booked at Nellie Weaver Hall through into 2020. So it does have bookings. Now, there are some gaps in there where our gaps were made during the weekdays, weekends, particular Saturdays are pretty full. Especially here, there's very few availabilities. And going into the following year into 2020, we're already booking stuff out through the end of 2020. So it, it does give use, but Saturday is the big use because that's where you're going to have your weddings or your kids' scenarios and other type of public things. And I understand that our community uses that facility quite a bit. So we, the fair, horse weekend also, when you calculate that, those number of weekends that we vote those things out, rodeo, et cetera, we, we take out a pretty good chunk of the number of weekends annually just for our community's sake.
I was just thinking, I had questions about the future projects specific to that facility as far as just sheer painting of the inside of that. And, um, you know, it's pretty rough when you have events there and the building itself as far as being able to, um, secure your revenue stream a little bit more in that facility and be able to secure your bookings and possibly create additional demand and more desire to use it. Just kind of wondering what your, what your thoughts are on that.
Right, so.
Well, thank you for saying it so I didn't have to on TV. So, um, yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking that, um, you know, just being there recently for horse week, there's quite a lot of, um, uh, things that would be nice to have, to have a better quality facility for the residents to be using.
So part of the, our, our bit supervisor, she's the board in your mind, is, is that we try to dress it up as best we can, but could you book higher end, more revenue generating, larger revenue generating activities? The one thing that Nellie Weaver Hall has for it is it's 300, I think it's 10,000 square feet. We, we can seat 350 people. There are not very many banquet facilities that have that capability with a full commercial kitchen. So we have the capability. The question is, and that's something we could look at as future investment, if we really looked at dressing it up more to bring in those larger type of venues that, uh, you can upbook the event, the activities in there where, where the revenue source is much greater, that, that potential is there for that size of facility and the need and the headliners are.
So I'd like to request for you to put together a package to explain what would be the cost, you know, how much we would have to measure R and then potentially what would, you know, a little bit of, um, I'd like to know specifically for the cost and then it would be nice to know if you have any of the other additional information as to what you think that that would be securing.
Yeah, it'd be my pleasure to do that. We've actually done some of that work, so we could put that together if that's the committee's desire. The other side of that is the resources that it takes, the staffing and everyone to be able to bring in a booking person to get all of those things done so that we can really, because the key to the facility is also booking the downtime, the weekday times, which could be more in line if it was set up correctly for meetings, conferences and things like that, meet conferences. So that could be done, trainings. That would be something that maybe would need a lot more evaluation, but that is the potential, the potential is there for that facility. But the facility doesn't want, currently right now, I think that's recovered from, a client to want to do that.
I mean, it's certainly a community-based facility. I wouldn't want to say that it's not because I enjoy every event I go there, which is many throughout the year. So, um, many, I mean, it's hard to even say how many of us and I've seen many of us at these events and, um, we use the facility a lot and it would be nice as we're bringing in, um, visitors from outside of Norco to have the best, you know, foot forward with our events because they're coming in and they're spending money here and what are they, you know, having that, that, you know, additional lipstick, as you said, having the, kind of having the pride and ownership and the pride in Norco and putting what we want Norco to be forward. And sometimes that facility, if you're standing in certain areas of it, maybe not be what I would like it to save for my community. So I, um, as you said, for the AC, that it will potentially reduce costs here. It's taking our, measure R funds and leveraging them to either save general fund resources or to bring in additional resources. That would be a considerable focus of mine. So I'd appreciate it if you could bring that information back to us. I don't want you to spend resources to figure this out. As you said, you've already figured some of it out. So whatever you can do to provide some general information as much as you possibly can, I'd appreciate that for the next meeting.
Well, we, so we have to add that to the agenda for the, that's our final thing when we're setting our agenda for future meetings, we can add that on.
Well, Madam Chair, one of the things we want to clarify is your request, Tara, could you link it to the discussion on the item on the agenda? What, what, um, what is the linkage between what you're requesting and the item on the agenda?
Well, the presentation itself has the information down here, but it doesn't have the dollar bills associated with these items.
These future projects?
Yes. So can I link it to asking questions about the presentation or do I have to link it to?
Absolutely, yeah.
Actually, I could do it. So it says here in the facility section, when I read this earlier, to the recommended action is to make appropriate recommendations, or if I don't know, that's not the same thing. The streets one says to prioritize and adjust as necessary, but the facilities one doesn't say to adjust as necessary.
I think the goal is still the same.
It's the intent is to adjust as necessary. So I would like this information so that I could possibly recommend that we adjust as necessary.
I, there's my interpretation, Madam Chair, maybe two things. It would come back to pulling off the list here, would be the two insulation projects. Okay? And I can come back, the linkage is that if we were to invest more money in that, the actual capital gain over time is going to be greater based on the usage that you could pick up if the building itself had some other improvements combined with this. And I, I think most of my staff would concur with that too.
Well, and it's the impact. I mean, I, I understand the insulation. We may all feel better and it may all actually, you know, we may be cooler in the facility. It may be that, it may be, but I as a resident in Norco feel absolutely nothing. I will have no different experience in that facility. So I measure our resources in improving Nellie Weaver, which I spent, you know, I go to many events in, I personally won't. There'll be no different experience. I'm interested in seeing measure our resources being leveraged and also improving that I'm actually personally experiencing. Insulation's wonderful, but I won't know.
I, and I agree with you, the, the facility could be greatly improved, but it's not really on this, part of what we're deciding tonight. So we would want to come back with it. And also remember, we don't know how much money there is. And so we're going to be coming back at mid-year, relooking at all these, relooking at what the actuals are so we could even entertain talking about this at mid-year. But, and, and I agree with you. I want to spend this money wisely and I want to spend it to make Norco look good. That's really what it was all about.
Yeah, and, and as it says that we should be, um, you know, prioritizing and adjusting as necessary, well, that would be mine.
And that's a fair thing. And a lot of what you're asking, I already have, I think, a witch of that information. And probably we would be bringing that back to you in future years anyway. But we might want to look at packaging it differently as we've talked about tonight or push that out in the package differently for a future year or mid-year or something.
Right. Okay, any other questions? Okay.
I guess kind of pony it on, I mean, would at some point be appropriate for this committee to suggest projects, I mean, such as an upgrade of Nellie Weaver?
So good question. I think the city attorney actually sort of talked about that in last city council meeting. And, and with respect to the committee's decision to add police and C S O officers is that those are, that was a recommendation that was brought before you and more or less a policy decision that that was outside of the scope of, of what was before you. And similarly, based on my interpretation, what he's told me is that you can't go out and shop for projects and bring it to yourself and say, "We want to recommend these projects." And that's why I was asking Tara to link that request to what is before you. And clearly I think there is a linkage here where there are these other projects, are our potential projects that you could consider as part of a package in making your decision.
No, I understand. I mean, I, I understand that given the timeframe, I mean, it's very, much, well, it's much more efficient for staff to come up with this series of projects, but say two years down the road, um, you know, perhaps there, you know, some priority, there could be priorities that this committee may have. I mean, it's not saying that, well, this is what we're going to fund, but it might be something we might suggest. Could the city, you know, staff look into it?
Right, absolutely.
And bring it back. And I think, you know, something such as a Nellie Weaver Hall upgrade, uh, you know, would be something along those lines. I would like to.
Yeah, I think if there's a nexus there. And I, one of the things that I see is, is that, um, we probably would be coming back to you again for some other improvements in following years. Actually, I know we aren't because there's only so much money there. So, but it might be better to look at packaging. I think Vincent talked about that too. It made more sense. So I think Tara's question, I think we can bring you back something at your next meeting. At least gives you a bigger, broader picture.
Any more questions?
I have a, just a statement. I know the members of the city staff have done a lot of work coming up with these proposals, done your best on estimating costs. Obviously you're not a bid cost, so there's going to be some variation, but you worked very hard at this and all the proposals add up to about the 5. something million that's expected to be raised on your R this fiscal year. We're only two years into this and I'm just leery of allocating a year's worth of funds without really knowing that we're going to have those funds for the next 10 months. I mean, I know Mr. Coros has very high confidence that things will continue as they are and we will have the.
Yeah, I think one of the other issues I guess is the timing of these projects, right? So that those monies are going to come to us on a monthly basis. Okay? So we're not going to, it's not like we're going to get the 5.5 million at one time and have it available. So part of what staff has to do is to obviously schedule the timing of these projects to coincide with the receipts so that we are not having to pay the 5.5 million of projects at the same time when we only have, um, half a million dollars in the bank. Okay, so, but as, again, as far as the overall projection in terms of the revenues, I think, again, I can't guarantee anything, but I believe our, our basis of projection is very reasonable and, and we're going to stick with that until we see additional information to change it one way or the other, whether it's to increase those revenues or, or say to you, we don't think those revenues are going to come in.
So I'd like the committee to consider an idea that maybe we should now, I mean, Bradley Gym is the most used facility and there's four or five projects that we basically do all of Bradley Gym, roof, AC, parking lot, insulation, comes about 700,000. So that's another way to look at that. And then maybe look at some of the other requests and say yes or no on pair of those buildings. I like the idea of like finishing one building, especially the high use building. I know Nellie Weaver Hall is also a high use building and people do see that with a good reflection or should be a good reflection on those.
They melt for us. It's our first time too, so we're kind of trying to figure out how to do it as well. So when we did our projects, yeah, we're like, well, we're going to estimate if we get this or if we do this here. I looked at the most, for me, it was about health and safety and critical things that need to be done. And so those things is how I play it as a problem generally sealed on those things because they're more hidden type of improvements. But obviously that's something that, you know, definitely as a whole, look at how those projects are packaged. And there may be benefits from going separately with the project versus or combining the project too.
Right, I understand that.
It's like for roofing, for example, I get better square footage if I'm going out with, you know, 500,000 square feet of roof for a contract versus.
Right, I understand. And from what you've told us, I think roofing and re-roofing is very important on all these things. Because of the consequences of not doing.
Since the projects are divided up like they are, you've done a lot of time and thought doing it this way, I'd like to make a motion to accept six of the eight projects that you have here and take the two insulation projects off. Pull those.
Uh, the comment?
Public comments.
Yeah, okay, and if you want to move forward.
Is your intention to have us both finish or are we going to do public comments and then given the time? We have another panel scheduled in two weeks, right?
Yes. No, you can sit down for a moment.
Well, first, let's do, see if we have the cards on it. Do we have the cards on it? We have one public comment card for Dixon. I've got them. So do we have a motion? Yeah, now you do.
I would like to present a motion to accept six of the eight projects on the public facilities projects. Pull the Bradley Gym installation and pull the Nellie Weaver installation and send it back for research for the batting installation and present that to us next time, but accept the other sets, uh, which would change the total from 2,41,125 to 1,733,125.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, and then this one right here. No, here.
I don't think I even understand it. I'm sorry. I took me while to get to the page that we were talking specifically about.
I would like to accept all the projects, except, pull the Bradley Gym installation and pull the Nellie Weaver installation and send it back for more research and present the research to us when you're done by accepting all the other projects.
This is projects, I thought.
The rest of them are all streets.
Oh, roofs, oh, yeah.
If we do this, then it's a worry.
Right.
Second.
Can we have a second? Discussion? Did you have any comments to make? Bill, did you have a comment?
Yeah, still under discussion.
I guess my question is, is how long would it take to get the information on the different approach to insulation?
I might have, I need at least two. I might have, I need at least two weeks to get sort of a real kind of feel for it, and then I can bring that information back. It may require more research, but at least it gives you kind of a, me and you, kind of an idea of what we're looking at.
Now, hasn't council also asked you?
Yes, they have. Yeah. I'm already working on it, but just giving myself a couple of weeks to make sure I get all my numbers together.
Do you have any comments? No, I think that since council and the vote, and us all agree that you should do more research on that, and then present it to us, I think that we can vote on the insulation after we get it presented to us.
Tara, did you have any comments? Are, I guess I have more questions about kind of the intent for the rest of the meeting tonight. Are we going to do, are we going to complete the two items on the agenda tonight? Or are we going to look at potentially holding the, because we have some questions out there to potentially use this, as Andy brought up in the beginning, to have it be that we've learned a lot tonight, and potentially do the vote at the, at the next meeting, which we already have our regular scheduled meeting in two weeks.
Well, we have a motion, so if the motion fails, then we'll extend it to the next meeting. If the motion passes, then we'll.
So then, can I make a friendly motion? I know I tried this last week, it was a little bit, but can I make a friendly motion to suggest to Chair, to Vice Chair Scholl that we potentially hold the motion over to the next meeting? Are you interested in potentially?
Is your intent to add more to that? I think that we should continue with the projects that are already presented to us, and discuss additional projects at a later date.
Is there support for Tara's motion, I guess, which is our turn of motion?
I'm concerned that if we, if we separate it out without having the whole package, that what if the information that we get naturally changes our decision on these items, because there's more information to be had? And so we don't have all the information on to, whether to make the decision for all of these items.
But that goes to a question I had answered, I asked earlier, he said they're not, they're, they're not together. Because I said the same thing earlier, I say, well, if we're doing a roof at Riley, and the installation at Riley, I want to know what's packed together. And Brian said, it's not fiscally responsible to do that, because two different projects, same project, but different ways we're going to do it, and he gets a better cost doing it just the roof by itself, the one outside actual contractor doing both, it costs us even more. He spoke about that earlier.
I think that that's not my, I appreciate that, thank you very much. I, I, I got that part. I was more concerned about just all the projects in general. Like, there's a lot going on here for public facilities, and taking just a few of them, and then getting more information, and then not putting it all together, and putting public facilities all together, and understanding what we're doing as a whole for this area, if there's potentially more information that we're going to get that could change our minds, or for the better or for the worse, I have no idea, because I don't have any information. So if we vote tonight, it's often a non-in support of these, all of these projects, because I actually am. So I'm just concerned with taking a vote and not having all of the information, because I feel like there's, like, we've learned more information about some of the decisions we made last week throughout the period of time, that now I feel like we may want to revisit some of those decisions, that I would hate to do that again, and repeat our, our actions that we had before with having possibly more information that's coming. And then so maybe I'll make a different decision here, or have additional items coming. I'm just concerned about pulling off. And if the rest of the committee doesn't have to share my concern, then, that I would not again, since I've made an initial statement, bring it back to you, I'm wondering if there's a possibility for a friendly amendment to hold this action over, since we're at 8:30. Is anyone else interested?
I apologize, I think you're, that's what we're doing, we, I think we agree. I think her motion is actually, and I could be wrong, I may not get any, but I think her motion is exactly what you're saying. Take the things out with a lot more information on, not vote on them tonight, the things will come, because we're not getting more information on any of those other stuff.
No, but what if the additional information we get makes us choose that we wouldn't do one of these items, because we would do something else instead? We would recommend we do something else. So even though I feel very strongly about all of these, but what if you make a different choice now that you have the additional information? And so maybe you don't pick these items now that you know more about everything else.
Not that. Staff has to come back with the bids to us, once they're bid it out, so we're going to have a secondary.
It's really, it's really wanting to be doing those other things.
But they're very close, these are engineer estimates. An engineer estimate is the engineer estimate. It will be, when they go to bid it, if there's a significant difference between the engineer estimate and what's bid, then there's usually something else going on. The engineer estimate is, is a reasonable estimate, it's the California, I mean, it's a standard.
I have to agree with that, that, but, because I had seen engineering estimate 700 close lots and lots of times. So, so I'm, I personally think that we should, we're ready to make the decision. Did you want to comment?
So the motion is to do all, six of these eight, leave off Bradley Gym, insulation installation, Nellie Weaver Hall.
Correct. And move those to the next meeting.
It was, I just want to make sure we have a motion from Vice Chair Scholl, except six of the eight, will Riley Gym installation and Nellie Weaver installation for further research and come back? And you had a total of 1,733,125 dollars?
Yes.
Okay, and I just wanted to be clear. And then, remember Capelli seconded?
Yes, ma'am.
And there, you denied the friendly amendment that member Yates opposed.
Oh, yeah, there was no second, so.
So I'm not trying to wash your best.
Yes, ready to vote? Okay. Member Yates? Member Warehane?
Aye.
Member Sandifer?
Aye.
Member Guy?
Aye.
Member Capelli?
Aye.
Vice Chair Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Olstead Bowen?
Aye.
Motion passes for ayes, noes, member Warehane, member Sandifer.
Is it four ayes or five?
Five ayes, one, two, three, five ayes with the member Warehane and member Sandifer nay. Okay, so now we're just going to have public comments, this is the time when persons of the audience wishing to address Measure R's, the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Do we have, do we have one part?
We have one part, my concern.
Many times. Supposed to be yours.
Good evening, committee members. I wish I'd have seen more of you at the budget workshops. And I wish I'd have seen more of you at council meetings, because of awful lot of questions you've asked on all three of these meetings, you would already known the answers, had you been to them. Would have helped you a lot. So with that being said, at the last council meeting, to kind of go along with committee member Yates's comment, council member mentioned that for this fiscal budget, that the Measure R, you know, Measure R monies, that the public would probably like to see some bang for their buck, just like you were saying, with the Nellie Weaver. And that goes back to what I said at your first meeting, with the city surveys, and the way the public voted, and the way everything was marketed. And what you have on your, in your pamphlets, was the streets and the infrastructure. And right here on this thing that you have, it talks about the public safety, and to continue and not have to make any cuts to our public safety. And the last meeting, which unfortunately I missed, chose to add the public safety, and the public not going to see that. So I really want to stress that these public infrastructure projects and street projects, the stuff that people are going to see for the first fiscal year, should be the bang for their buck, in my opinion.
No other speaker cards for the second? And so we want to entertain items for future Measure R's committee oversight meetings for the agenda. Do we have to state them, and then state them, and then it would be the majority consent to put them on the calendar? Okay, I would like to see an agenda item where staff tells us where the sales tax is going to come from, and how the estimates were made, and educate the committee on sales tax, general sales tax. And also, the, I don't know if this could be the same, because it's kind of related, but the council, between now and our next meeting, council will approve the budget. So I would like staff to give us an overview of the budget that's approved, and how Measure R relates to the approved budget. And that, which would include revenues, which are sales tax, correct?
Well, let's, let's take them one, one at a time.
One at a time, so much?
Yeah, so that we're not.
I tend to be worried.
Yeah, we're not gearing up here. So your first request was to provide an overview regarding the estimate for Measure R sales tax revenue?
Correct, similar to what, what we did in EDAC, something like that, where here's where our sales tax comes from, here's where we made our, why we made the estimates we made, those kind of things.
Okay.
I saw a report on the sales tax. Do we have to move and do that for this?
Okay, let's take that, if that's, if you can vote on that, then we take one, that item first.
Any comments? And a motion?
Was there a second?
Can I have a motion?
You have a motion, right?
Am I leaving it? Oh, I have, I have your second. I'll second.
Aye.
Member Warehane?
Aye.
Member Sandifer?
Aye.
Member Guy?
Aye.
Member Capelli?
Aye.
Vice Chair Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Olstead Bowen?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Your second proposal was to bring back information regarding how the city council.
Just the, just the approved budget, a presentation of the approved budget.
Okay, again, if you want to get a presentation on the general, the total city approved budget, again, we don't mind providing that as information at some point, but I would have encouraged you again to go to the city council meeting, or get that information as, yeah, as part of that. I'm, I don't object, at some point, if that's your desire, we can buy the information, given that, yeah, we can provide.
Kind of a long process.
Susan, can I probably suggest what we do is do it as a summary? Because I think that maybe there are some changes to potentially what is in reserves, or potentially what the shortfall is, and decisions we're making as this committee is based on the shortfall of the general fund, and if that is potentially changed, so are you interested in possibly making a summary?
So is that a motion?
I was just going to suggest for your motion.
Okay. All right, I move that we get a summary, a quick summary of the general fund expenditures and revenues. Have a second.
I second.
Member Yates?
Aye.
Member Warehane?
Aye.
Member Sandifer?
Aye.
Member Guy?
Aye.
Member Capelli?
Aye.
Vice Chair Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Olstead Bowen?
Almost had it.
Aye. Motion passes, you know. And finally, we want to bring back the insulation projects, and put that on our agenda for next, the next meeting, which is, is it the 26? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, can I have a second?
No, that's, that's part of an ongoing decision.
Oh, so I don't mean.
We're going to do that.
Yeah, so that's, that continues. On the new, on the new items that you voted for, I just want to caution you, this doesn't necessarily mean that these items will all come back to you at your next meeting. We will obviously pace those. And one of the things, though, I do want to let you know is that at your next meeting, we like to provide you with a presentation on parliamentary procedures, okay? We want to do a training on that for you, something we should have done at the beginning, but being that we didn't do it, we want to just take a, probably the first hour of that meeting to, to provide our presentation to you.
No, I will not be, I cannot attend that meeting.
Okay, I'll give you a copy of the presentation.
Wait, are you going to, are you going to video it?
I mean, I can, I mean, I've tried, but I can't guarantee that.
So you will need the city to arrange for, to have him here on video conferencing. Because then you have to be public notice.
Yeah, that is exactly true, wherever you are, you have to public notice that. But again, the logistics of that, additional staffing that is required to do that, it's not working.
Might be best ones that.
Yeah.
I think you're suggesting that's best ones that.
Yeah, we will, we'll provide you the information.
It's going to be weaker than it was.
We'll have a forum. I mean, we'll have a forum with only conference.
Okay, so we have the items?
Can we revisit next time and get some clarification, maybe a formal policy on how the committee can make our own suggestions? You know, I, I don't feel comfortable with just being told, no, you can't, you know, what you get, what we get from the people, you know, that we talk to every day, you know, the residents, I don't see why we can't express that as a, you know, a motion to, or a suggestion at least, to, on certain thing, like the Nellie Weaver Hall, for example. I mean, I 100% agree, that, you know, the place is really pretty dumpy. And I, and I think more residents are going to see that, going to see that, that are going to come see City Hall, and see the paint job. So I'd like to have a way that we can do that, at least make some avenue for us to make those kind of suggestions.
I think we already had that here today. With respect to Nellie Weaver Hall, it was a project before you, and where, again, part of what Tara was suggesting was to look at some of the things we could do with that, with Nellie Weaver Hall, and that is, that's coming back to you. I think there is a difference between that and actually going out, outside of the projects that are before you, to shop for projects entirely related to, to what is being presented to you to, to look at.
I'd like to know where that's written, that we can't do that. I, everything I've read, the ordinance, the resolution, everything, you know, makes our responsibility to, to relay that to the city council.
Well, the city council, the problem being is that the city council controls the contracts. We don't have the right to demand that the city enter into contract that they're not into, or to, so it's kind of a legal issue, and we don't have the right to demand or form policy. And adding, for example, adding officers is a policy decision, it's not a, just an economic decision.
But it's, you know, it's not that we're forming policy, it's just that we're making a suggestion. And I don't see why we can't have staff, you know, look at something, or at least, I mean, we're making recommendations only to the city council, city council could veto everything we do. So I don't see why we can't make that suggestion to the city council, they don't have to act about it.
It depends on the, my opinion is, depends on the type of comment, because those suggestions require staff time or private engineering. because those suggestions require staff time or private engineering time to come up with an answer. So you're expending resources on suggestions and I could have 50 of them. And that may not be the best use of our time to research each idea. I get a lot of requests or actually complaints about why didn't I do this? Haven't I done that? Why are we delaying on this? And there's general reasons why we could say, we didn't select this street this year because of, there's a water project three years from now. Or there's different reasons for it that we could say simply right off the cuff because we happen to know different information. And I think as we have these discussions about projects, you can ask, well, how come you didn't choose this street? What's the issues with this? Why wasn't it selected? And that's the appropriate time to say, oh, I didn't choose Valley View because I have a waterline project that needs to get done on that street, so we're holding off on it. Hopefully, again, when we come before you at those discussions, that's the time to question because you have information, the residents would like to see this or that done. In Brian's case, this particular building or this kind of improvement is asking that question and why we didn't have that on our list right now. And it's also, you can ask those questions, not necessarily in this meeting, you can just call us and we can give you that information and provide that information to you, not necessarily in this forum because we're always available for those discussions.
Are you presenting any comments on your agenda? Are you done? Or do you like some?
So I still, I agree with the committee member who brought this up. We have, all of the information that I've read as well also says that we're supposed to be establishing priorities. We're supposed to be establishing, our own agenda item tonight says, and adjust as necessary. What does adjust mean? And so what I heard tonight was that I can ask you to do and to bring additional questions within, since the item that I had, but I didn't hear that we couldn't bring other items. We can't suggest additional things because as a general lender bond, there aren't actually, our committee is pretty loose as far as, you know, our recommendation, part of it. So we didn't make a policy decision based on, to me, a policy decision based on it's adding additional police officers, whether we can or not. That's not a policy decision. And we didn't say you have to adjust the, we didn't say you, we didn't make a determination that all that stuff has to happen. What we're saying is that the public, the residents of Norco, this committee chose to recommend it. Whether the council chooses it or not is a whole other ball of wax. I myself have additional items that I would like to add to the agenda beyond, you know, in New York Hall to suggest that as a policy decision, the committee look at things that would stabilize the sales tax revenue within the city and leverage our resources. For instance, if we worked in, you know, we're working on, Chad is doing an amazing job with Hamner in improving that street, which is obviously a thorough corridor for sales tax revenue within Norco. But there are other areas that I don't see on here that I would like to ask some questions about. So from what the committee member is stating, that he feels as if we can't make those requests or that information and add that as an agenda item. So could you clarify whether we can or we cannot? And then if we cannot, then I agree with him that we need you to provide back at the next meeting. Why not?
Right, let me read section two of the resolution. Resolution of the city council of the city of Norco, establish a measure R, citizens oversight committee. This is section two deals with the duties of the committee. Says to carry out aesthetic purpose, the committee shall perform the following duties. Review schedules, end list of proposed projects and program to be funded with measure R revenues, prioritize projects and programs, make adjustments and provide recommendations to the city council for final approval. So clearly, my interpretation of this, which is the way the city attorney interprets it is, we'll provide you a list of programs or a list of projects. You can review those lists and prioritize them and determine what you view as priorities from that list and then make recommendations to the city council. I don't think that stops you from, at some point, requesting that we look to bring you, review or study information and bring back information to you that might help you in the performance of your duties down the road. But as far as what you approve for budgetary purposes, it should be based on the projects and programs that are provided to you that you work from.
So what is the make adjustments in that statement?
So make adjustments.
What does that mean?
Yeah, I said a list that is provided to you. You can take it as is or you can drop some things off of that list and...
So only allowed to adjust down, we're not allowed to adjust up? And that's not clearly defined here, so I'm curious.
Going back to the public safety issue, by the way, again, I had a discussion with the city attorney on that issue and he believes it was appropriate to pass it on to the city council. Okay, city council ultimately makes their final determination on that. I didn't see it as something that totally was, you were veering entirely off of your mandate. So ultimately, the city council gets to make that determination based on your recommendation with respect to that issue. At some point down the road, if we continue to have issues, I may have the city attorney be part of our, one of our meetings at least, so that you can ask some of these questions with respect to what you're... Is what I...
Are you, as I was moving forward and then seeing if we have additional questions coming up? Because at that kind of, so being, in our July meeting, we could request the city, say the city attorney could, we could add that to our agenda.
I think if we, if we have another issue.
You know, part of the, and the whole analysis projects and things that we're talking about is, we've done, we're constantly doing analysis. We're already thinking down the road. I'm not, even your comments that you made tonight, your suggestions, which we can bring back. We already were in that. The issue is, there's only this much of a pot and how do you figure that in when there are some real key priorities? But it doesn't mean that we don't need to consistently, as I call it as a team here, continue to look at the future and where we need to go and be the, and spend this money as wisely as possible to make those improvements or better utilize those funds that make a different type of positive impact, such as economic development or something else, because that's also, plays a role in this. So I think that's going to be consistently what we look at. When we go back to the original ad hoc infrastructure committee, we looked at 20 years and a lot of the stuff we're bringing you was part of that whole discussion. And so we, I think it's something that we're going to have to constantly be working and looking at. And we need to be looking down the road and we need to be looking at it. And sometimes if we can do something to make it make more sense, then that's something we should have that dialogue with you on. And from that dialogue, maybe other ideas come up to how we can look at something and make it better.
Fair enough question. So after the committee approves, city council looking at what we proposed, how far down the road is that presented to the city council?
That's a good question and I think I sort of alluded to that at the beginning. Because I want the city council to see the entire recommendation as one so that they can factor all the projects and programs that you have recommended. The plan that I have right now is after you've made all your recommendations for next year's measure R budget, that would then be carried over to the city council to review that budget.
So when all the proposed funds have been allocated?
Yeah, so we have, basically, we're almost there except for the two items you pulled tonight, right? Is when you have resolved on those two projects or then at that particular point, yeah, send it to the city council.
I have two agenda items. I have two items. The first one, I would like to reflect some additional potential projects and maybe just some understanding would be the appropriate way to put forward. Just some additional information to understand what, if we were to use resources more towards, as I was saying, leveraging it to either protect our current revenue streams or to generate additional revenue, what would they be? For instance, Sixth Street is, has some significant ISOR issues and that is a corridor to get to Ingalls. And so everyone entering our city that's going directly towards our largest special event location is driving down Sixth Street and the fencing and some other projects and stuff there. So I would like to, I'm just suggesting, I don't know how to put it in the correct way, but I was, I'm curious about projects that would relate to that where we would be utilizing our resources to leverage that and what would be appropriate?
I'm still not clear about what you're really wanting to do.
So I'd be interested in ensuring that the resources that we use, that we would be leveraging them to either protect the current revenue streams we have or to increase revenue streams.
Okay.
So for instance, if we did an improvement project on Sixth Street and then it would lead down the road to us having additional resources for the general fund through sales tax and potentially for measure R.
Okay.
So I would like to see, we have very little in the way of projects that are revenue related, that are increasing, that are leveraging to either increase or protect. So I would like us to see some that are.
Okay, so are you making a recommendation to staff?
This is my agenda item request.
I don't know if it's an agenda item. I want to, again, make sure we understand what we're working. Is, are you making a recommendation that if we are bringing projects to you, that we prioritize those projects that encourage economic development and results in additional revenues?
I would like to, I mean, I would like the committee to get to a place where we actually have priorities established so that you're aware of that for the next time we have our next round. But since we couldn't meet before the projects were, were a little apart in the first year.
Okay.
It's in Norco. So because we're on the backside of it, I'm skipping that and just going directly to asking for some specific projects because I feel that they're potentially, my second agenda item could lead to there being additional resources available again. So I would like to know what additional projects we can possibly have on to be presented to us because you have to present the project, so I'm asking you to present some that are specific like this.
Okay.
For now.
Okay, for future considerations or?
It could be considered in this round.
It could be improved.
Yeah, I don't know how that relates.
And I'm suggesting potentially Sixth Street as a very good example. Ingalls is a very good example. Other, I've asked for some specific information relating to Nellie Weaver Hall, but the Ingalls complex as a whole is another, just because significant amounts of our visitors are going down that corridor and going to the R Center. So I'd like to see some additional project options that we could potentially vote on next week if there were additional resources, which I think is entirely possible.
Yes.
This is something we should, I don't know if this is really the purview of this commission. I think we have to understand more about what this even means because I still don't...
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to get to. I think what she's...
Well, for instance, last week I asked Chad how much it would cost to do the fencing on Sixth Street and he told me $200,000. So you do have some information. I'm not asking that you would go and spend significant resources. I think as Brian has stated, that you already have a really good idea of many of these things. So just whatever you do know, they may be projects that are waiting in the wings that didn't make it through your cuts, but maybe they would have made it through ours. And so we would like to, whatever projects, whatever information you do have, please refer to that.
So you want, okay, because, so Brian had said way back in the beginning when we started this, that he had five other projects that were backing up. So what you're saying, what are those projects and what could we potentially spend the money on? So could you bring additional projects? And what she's also asking is how they would, how would they improve the look of our city? And this is kind of like the EDAC thing.
Right, if money is available.
Right.
If money is available, yes. And have a particular eye on revenue generating. And I personally am giving you a heads up that I'm most interested in Sixth Street and Ingalls if you do happen to have any of those in your back pocket.
Okay, well, again, before we can actually work on that, we need to make sure that is the desire of the majority of you.
Yes. That is my, these are agenda items.
So you're making a motion?
So I'm making a motion.
Just for clarification, I'm sorry, but you're asking for a task that really is almost impossible to quantify as far as the economic generating, whilst in aesthetically, and maybe if you phrase it, it's aesthetics, which improves the...
I'm not looking for an ROI.
Viewability.
Yeah, we're not calculating ROI. That's an incredibly expensive and somewhat controversial calculation. We can make, in your best judgment, that it's going to have a positive impact.
Okay, it's not necessarily financial, but a positive impact overall.
Which is going to lead to, the more people want to come here, the more they're going to spend money here.
These are for discussion.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understood what you were looking for so I can gear it towards what you're expecting.
And this is specifically for Sixth Street and Ingalls?
No, I think any.
Okay, you want to leave it open?
Those would be very good examples.
Okay, got it.
I got to say something. Council meeting, budget workshops, Ingalls and Nellie Weaver Hall was discussed. Would have answered a lot of our questions.
And they're held at 3 o'clock, sir, which unfortunately I know, so I have to...
You wanted to be on this commission.
Okay, we're, all right, we're, you're out of line. You're out of order. So my question is how that information brought back to us and anyone second?
Just clarification, some of that may not be at the next meeting, but we can schedule it again.
And to send when I'm ready, you can get a vote for the next one, but whatever you do have...
Because I could probably do a presentation that would take up almost a whole meeting.
For our six weeks meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Master plan.
The motion is your...
Oh, we got to vote.
We get to vote. Number Guy? Make people more interested.
Aye.
Number Werking?
I get it now.
Yeah.
Number Sandifer?
Aye.
Number Guy?
Exactly.
Number Capelli?
It's a revenue producing.
Vice Chair Shaw, aye. Chair Simmons? Olsted Bowen? Motion passed with unanimous.
So with that, oh, we're on our way.
This could go to six months agenda item, I don't...
Because this is a clarification of how we're going to present the information to council.
Okay.
Because as I'm concerned with the fact that we moved forward with that one item tonight and not having the whole package together, I'm wondering if, if there... So first a question, if we're allowed to, at the end of the whole thing, review what we did and see if we want to make any adjustments now that we've gotten further through the process and we may potentially have additional information and want to make changes to the motions that we've made? Is that, is that something that has to be agendized?
No, so what I plan on doing is, once you've made all your recommendations, we'll prepare a staff report that will come to you. So you see all the recommendations that you've made and we have a formal measure R budget that you then, that will be forwarded to the city council. And at that point, if there is, if you need to revisit anything, as long as you follow the protocol, I'm not even sure what that protocol is at this point, in terms of revisiting stuff you've already voted on, okay? Redoing your vote, I got to check with the city attorney on that, but most likely that's not. It would just be so you confirm, you see what is moving forward to the city council. But I'm not, I'm not going to do it just because you want to redo your vote.
No, it's not very redoing the vote, but I think that there were some conditions that were needed on some, some decisions that we made were conditions that were based on things that were happening in the budget. And now you're going to give us a summary of what's actually going to truly get adopted in the budget? And then maybe decisions and recommendations that we are, want to make that are a part of that may be different. may be different now that there's actual action. So I want to be able to go back and look at that specific decision. And I want to make sure that if I have to agendize it so that I'm following the appropriate procedure that I do in advance.
Anyone else? We're adjourned.